Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students receive grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students receive grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students receive grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students receive grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing this CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed.
Well, I get it.
Good morning, all. It's nine o'clock. It's time for the last day of our September 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. Before we begin today's agenda, I am very pleased to announce that the search committee to identify the next president of California State Polytechnic University Humboldt has completed its work. I'm very pleased to announce that... Well, wait a minute. I haven't... I appreciate it, but let me get to the good part first. But I appreciate the encouragement. Dr. Richard A. Carvahal has been selected as Cal Poly Humboldt's next president effective January 2026. Now you can applaud. Dr. Carvahal currently serves as the president of Valdosta State University in Valdosta, Georgia, where his leadership has been marked by significant enrollment growth driven by a focus on both recruitment and retention, strategic expansion in academic planning, and increased experiential learning opportunities and community engagement. We will learn more about Dr. Carvahal's professional and personal background during the upcoming Committee on the University and Faculty Personnel. In the meantime, on behalf of the full board, I'd like to thank both the search committee and interim president in particular, President Spagna, for so adeptly leading Cal Poly Humboldt since his appointment began over a year ago. That is well deserved, sir. You really are... We really are in your debt. And on that high note, we now proceed to today's agenda. Trustee Furstenberg, would you please convene the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel?
Thank you, Chair Clark. We have quite an agenda, so will the meeting of the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel please come to order. It's now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the last meeting? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Today, the committee has six items on the agenda. Item seven has been removed from the agenda. So we will begin with item two, an action item, providing the compensation to the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs. The item will be presented by Chancellor Garcia.
Thank you, trustee Furstenberg. Buenos dias. I am extremely pleased that Dr. Junius Gonzalez has accepted the position of Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs for the California State University. As I have noted previously to the board and to others, Dr. Gonzalez is a leader with extraordinary credentials and a remarkable breadth and depth of experience. Throughout his career, he has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to inclusive excellence and a leadership style grounded in integrity, flexibility, and authentic collaboration. Since March 2022, Dr. Gonzalez has served as provost and senior vice president of Academic Affairs for Montclair State University, a rising Hispanic-serving institution nationally recognized for social mobility. There, he has championed student success through evidence-based programs and expanded support services shaped by broad campus input. He's revitalized academic offerings with innovative new programs, several in partnership with local community colleges, and strengthened the university's acclaimed Unbound online program to better serve adult learners. Just as important, he's invested deeply in the people of the institution, launching professional and well-being initiatives to support faculty and staff development. Before joining Montclair State, Dr. Gonzalez held senior academic leadership roles at several prominent institutions. He served as provost and vice president of Academic Affairs at the New York Institute of Technology, and previously as senior vice president of Academic Affairs and as interim president of the University of North Carolina System. Other academic leadership positions include key roles at the University of Texas El Paso and the University of South Florida, and faculty appointments at both George Washington and Georgetown Universities. It was as a leader of the 17-campus University of North Carolina System that Dr. Gonzalez developed his appreciation and understanding of the power of systemness. This and his passion for educating future-ready graduates are aligned perfectly with our shared vision for the CSU's paths forward, as I have noted previously. A psychiatrist by training, Dr. Gonzalez has worked in the private sector as a principal and scientist at Apt Associates, now App Global, and in the federal government with the National Institutes of Health. This rich experience has given him a unique perspective on how academia, public policy, and practice can coalesce to meet real-world needs and drive positive change. A first-generation college student, Dr. Gonzalez earned his bachelor's degree from Brown University, an MBA from the University of Maryland, and an MD from the University of Pennsylvania School of Medicine. Of course, I would be remiss if I did not express my sincere gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Nathan Evans for serving with such distinction and dedication as a CSU's chief academic officer since April 2023, and I am very pleased that he will continue his outstanding Today, I recommend that Dr. Junius Gonzalez, as Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs for the California State University, receive an annual salary of $440,000 effective October 6, 2025. A monthly auto allowance of $1,000 and standard benefits for executive-classified employees are provided. To members of the committee and full board, I request your approval of the compensation for the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs as published in the item before you. Trustee Furstenberg, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation. The approval of compensation for the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. May I have a preliminary motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions from anyone on the board? It appears there are no questions or comments. There has been a motion and a second to approve the item. Only committee members may vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. Thank you. Item three is an action item, providing compensation for the president of California State Polytechnic University Humboldt. The amended item was provided in a handout and will be presented by Chancellor Garcia.
Thank you, trustee Furstenberg. As Chair Clark announced just moments ago, Dr. Richard A. Calvahal has accepted the position of president of Cal Poly Humboldt, and I couldn't be more pleased. Dr. Calvahal is a principled, innovative, and student-centered leader whose professional experience and personal background make him perfectly suited to serve Cal Poly Humboldt's ninth president and the first Latino to lead the institution. As Chair Clark noted in his announcement, Dr. Calvahal currently serves as president of Georgia's Valdosta State University, a doctoral-granting regional comprehensive institution serving more than 10,000 diverse students. There, he led a campus-wide, highly collaborative goal-setting and strategic planning effort that has resulted in, among other things, a 7% increase in first-year retention, year-over-year increases in student headcount for six conservative terms, the launch of a Center for Learning and Teaching that has improved classroom instruction, and the formation of a Center for Regional Impact that has facilitated the completion of over 300 community enrichment projects. In addition, under Dr. Calvahal's leadership, the university has added programs in data science and other STEM fields, and has significantly increased hands-on learning opportunities for all majors, and while retaining and strengthening programs in the arts, business, and the health sciences. Prior to his tenure at Valdosta State, Dr. Calvahal served as interim president at Dorton State College, and for five years as president of Bainbridge State College, both also located in Georgia. He also held senior positions at Washington Cascadia College and Kansas Independent Community College, as well as senior administrative positions at liberal arts colleges in South Carolina and Illinois. A first-generation college student, Dr. Calvahal earned a bachelor's degree in mass communication and sociology from Oklahoma's East Central University, a master's in college student personnel administration from Southern Illinois University at Carbondale, and a doctorate in educational administration from the University of South Carolina. I must also note that Dr. Calvahal spent his childhood years in Humboldt County, where he says he once dreamed of attending Cal Poly Humboldt, then Humboldt State. He has a unique connection to the university and its one-of-a-kind setting, and a deep understanding of the institution's polytechnic mission and its transformative role across California's North Coast region. And I would be remiss if I did not echo Chair Clark in expressing my deep gratitude and appreciation to interim President Spagna for extending his outstanding leadership of the university so that we could recruit a leader with the professional and personal qualities of Dr. Calvahal. Again, thank you, interim President Spagna. We really appreciate you. Now on to committee business. I recommend that Dr. Richard A. Calvahal, as the next president of Cal Poly Humboldt, receive an annual salary of $435,765 effective January 20, 2026. Additionally, because Cal Poly Humboldt does not have an official university residence for the president, I also recommend that Dr. Calvahal receive an annual housing allowance of $50,000. In according with existing policy, a monthly auto allowance of $1,000 and standard benefits for executive-classified employees are provided. To members of the committee and full board, I request your approval of the compensation for the president of Cal Poly Humboldt as published in the item before you. Trustee Furstenberg, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. The approval of compensation for the president of California State Polytechnic University Humboldt is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. May I have a preliminary motion from a committee member to approve the item?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion or questions from the board? It appears there are no questions or comments. There has been a motion and a second to approve the item. Only committee members may vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. Thank you. Item four is an action item, providing compensation for the acting president of California State University Long Beach. The amended item was provided in a handout and will be presented by Chancellor Garcia.
Thank you, trustee Furstenberg. As this board is aware, I have appointed Andrew Jones to serve as acting president of California State University Long Beach, succeeding President Jane Close Connolly, who retires after more than a decade of dedicated service. He will serve until the national search for the university's next regularly-appointed president is completed. Acting President Jones has served the CSU with distinction for more than 25 years, ably leading the Office of General Counsel since his appointment as executive vice chancellor and general counsel in January 2018. In this role, he also served as secretary of the Board of Trustees and brought his expertise to bear on many important issues of board governance and leadership. His early service includes roles as deputy general counsel, team leader for the Office of General Counsel's Business and Finance Team, and counsel for several CSU campuses, including nearly 10 years as counsel at Cal State Long Beach. In addition, for In addition, for 15 years, acting president Jones served as assistant secretary of the Board of Trustees before being appointed secretary. Acting President Jones is a proud alum of the university he now leads, earning his bachelor's degree from Cal State Long Beach before going on to earn his Juris Doctorate from the University of California Davis. I am pleased that he has accepted this appointment, and I have every confidence that acting president Jones' breadth and depth of experience, together with his demonstrated commitment to the CSU student-centered mission, make him ideally suited to guide Cal State Long Beach through this important time of transition. Today, I recommend that Andrew Jones, as acting president of California State University Long Beach, receive an annual salary of $498,269 effective August 25, 2025. A monthly auto allowance of $1,000 and standard benefits for executive-classified employees are provided. He is being offered the same salary that Dr. Jane Close Connolly had as she served as president. To members of the committee and full board, I request your approval of compensation for the acting president of California State University Long Beach as published in the item before you. Trustee Firstenberg, that concludes my presentation.
Oh, thank you. The approval of compensation for the acting president of California State University Long Beach is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. May I have a preliminary motion from a committee member to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions from the board? Well, I would just like to say that I had breakfast with the acting president, and he's ready for this job. It is a very, very exciting appointment. Chair Clark?
I would just share those comments. I'm very pleased that after all these years of service, you're able to finish your time in this position. Well deserved. We really appreciate you.
Are there any additional comments? All right. There has been a motion and a second to approve the item. Only committee members may vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. Moving along. The next action item providing compensation for the interim executive vice chancellor and general counsel, the item will be presented by the chancellor.
Thank you, Trustee Firstenberg. Moments ago, I noted how pleased I was that Andrew Jones has stepped up to serve as acting president of Cal State Long Beach. With his transition to the presidency, I am similarly pleased to share that Dawn Theodora will succeed acting president Jones as interim vice chancellor and general counsel for the California State University. As most of you know, Dawn has served as associate vice chancellor and deputy general counsel and as assistant secretary of the Board of Trustees since March 2023. In these roles, she has worked closely with the executive vice chancellor and general counsel in overseeing the operations of the Office of General Counsel and managing legal services for all 22 CSU campuses. Dawn also plays an important role in board processes and procedures, helping to ensure compliance with open meeting laws and maintaining strong governance practices, as just two examples. Dawn first joined the CSU's Office of General Counsel in 2001 and has built an outstanding record of service over more than two decades. In addition to her current role, she has served as assistant vice chancellor and chief counsel for business and finance, and as university counsel for several CSU campuses, including three years on-site at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Her legal experience is wide-ranging, from litigating cases in state and federal court to serving as a system-wide Title IX legal specialist and advising on real estate, land use, and environmental law. A proud first-generation college student, Dawn earned her bachelor's degree from the University of California Irvine and her Juris Doctorate from the University of San Diego. I have every confidence that she will serve the CSU with integrity, expertise, and distinction, qualities she has consistently demonstrated throughout her career. Today, I recommend that Dawn Theodora, as interim vice chancellor and general counsel, receive an annual salary of $386,529 effective August 25, 2025. Please note, this is the same salary received by former executive vice chancellor and general counsel. The salary for this position has not been adjusted since July 2022. A monthly auto allowance of $1,000 and standard benefits for executive-classified employees are provided. To members of the committee and full board, I request your approval of the compensation for the interim executive vice chancellor and general counsel as published in the item before you. Trustee Firstenberg, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
No, thank you. The approval of the compensation for the interim executive vice chancellor and general counsel is an action item before the committee. May I have a preliminary motion from a committee member to approve this item?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions from the board?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
And this is going to be completely self-serving, but I'm going to say it anyway. I think many times lawyers get a bad rap. And to sit in the seat of general counsel is an immense responsibility, and it's where, in my lifetime, I've met a lawyer as talented as the person who's going to sit in that seat now. And I'm just glad we're in such good hands.
Oh, thank you for that comment, Mr. Chair. That's wonderful. Are there any other comments? Okay. There has been a motion and a second to approve the item. Only committee members may vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. Moving along. Item six is an information item providing the transition program for the president of Cal State University Long Beach. The item will be presented by our chancellor.
Thank you, Trustee Firstenberg. After more than a decade of distinguished service as president of Cal State Long Beach and a career defined by an unwavering commitment to student success and educational equity, Dr. Jane Close Connolly has retired from the presidency and will begin a one-year executive transition assignment. As part of this transition, Dr. Connolly will consult with the acting president of Cal State Long Beach, and later with the university's next regularly-appointed president. With the search for the new president having been extended, her experience and insight will be invaluable in ensuring a smooth and successful transition for the acting president and then for the appointed president. In addition, Dr. Connolly will focus on a study of best practices in shared governance during this challenging era of divisiveness and legislative intrusion into higher education. This work will span from August 2025 through August 2026 and culminate in a workshop for the Board of Trustees, for CSU presidents, and for others across the system. While completing these assignments, Dr. Connolly is appointed into the management personnel plan with an annual compensation of $354,072 consistent with CSU practice for executives participating in the transition program. Please note, the transition salary is calculated at the midpoint between the president's final salary as president and the maximum salary for full professor. We are deeply grateful for Dr. Connolly's outstanding leadership at Cal State Long Beach, and we are also thankful for her continued service to the CSU during this transition. I have no doubt that this work, like her presidency, will have a lasting positive impact on the system. Trustee Firstenberg, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor. This item is an information item. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing or seeing none, we will proceed to our final item. Item eight is an information item providing an update on civil rights programs and services. These will be presented by Vice Chancellor and Chief Human Resources Officer Frank Hutarte and Patty Navalta, Associate Vice Chancellor of Strategic Communications and Brand Marketing. Vice Chancellor.
Thank you, Trustee Firstenberg. Patty was unable to join us, so we have interim senior director Fratello with us. So, committee, I'm pleased to share the continued progress we're making in civil rights across the CSU. Since taking on this role in April, my focus has been on building sustainable systems that not only strengthen our progress and process, but more importantly, reflect the care, compassion, and accountability in how we serve our students, faculty, and staff. Since starting in April, I've engaged directly with leaders and teams across the system, listening, learning, and assessing how our policies show up in practice. What I've heard reinforces the importance of communicating with clarity and consistency so that every member of our community knows where to turn for support and feels seen and valued in the process. This work also aligns with the chancellor's strategic plan to position CSU as an employer of choice, a place where people feel respected, supported, and proud to contribute to their talents. Embedding equity and civil rights protections into the fabric of our culture is central to our vision. The initiative we'll discuss today reflects that commitment. It's a partnership between civil rights and strategic communications, designed to move us beyond compliance and towards a true culture shift, one rooted in transparency, connection, and trust. With that, I'd like to introduce Jean Fratello, interim senior director of Integrated Internal Communications, who will walk us through how this campaign will help us achieve that vision system-wide. Jean, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Hutarte, and good morning, Chair Firstenberg, Chair Clark, trustees, chancellor, and colleagues. Associate Vice Chancellor Patty Navalta was not able to be here today, but I'm pleased to present this information on her behalf. We thank you for this opportunity to share the new Title IX and Civil Rights Communications Plan, developed in close partnership with our Title IX Civil Rights Oversight Committee. This plan builds on what we know works. We've seen it through our Stop CSU Cuts campaign, where we activated every single university, mobilized across teams, and created a shared voice across our system. That campaign proved we can reach every university, every audience, and build momentum together. This is our first comprehensive system-wide awareness campaign for Title IX and civil rights. This is not about external PR, it's about how we speak directly to our students, faculty, staff, families, and their support systems in a way that's compassionate, relatable, and part of everyday CSU life. Working together across the CSU, this internal communication strategy ensures that we embed our existing awareness campaigns into a comprehensive and sustained culture of safety, inclusion, and support throughout all CSU universities. It also ensures that we speak in a consistent voice while allowing each university to customize the messaging to include their own unique programs and resources. Before we dive in, I'd like to take a moment to ground us in the objectives of this presentation. These goals will help frame our discussion and guide what we're hoping to achieve today. The goal of this work is to increase awareness and understanding of the CSU's Title IX and civil rights programs and resources, ensuring that students, faculty, staff, families, and other support systems know their rights, responsibilities, and available support services. The goal of the presentation is to provide an overview of comprehensive internal communications campaign with clear deliverables, timeline, and metrics. And the call to action is to endorse the system-wide communications strategy to further the CSU's commitment to Title IX and civil rights awareness and creating a culture of care. And the next step is to fully implement the campaign. Moving on to why this matters. We know that policies alone don't change culture, people do. The heart of this plan is making sure that every member of the CSU community knows that you have the right to feel safe here, you have the right to support. We all share our responsibility as a member of the CSU community, and this is where to go when you need help. Just as the recent Stop CSU Cuts campaign showed us the power of collective messaging, this campaign aims to embed these rights and resources into our everyday conversations so they become part of our DNA and not just words on a policy page. Our goal, our goal is simple: raise awareness and build trust. Everyone in our CSU community should know their rights and protections, where to find confidential help, how to safely report a concern, and that violations of our nondiscrimination policy will not be tolerated at the CSU. We want those seeking help to feel seen, heard, and supported, not intimidated or overwhelmed. We will use clear, unified messaging across all universities because unity drives trust, awareness, and action. We've made a deliberate choice to speak in a voice that is empowering and respectful, clear and conversational, warm, affirming, and human-centered, and knowledgeable. We know how to get you the resources that you need. No jargon, no legalese, just language that says you belong here and we've got your back. When our tone is consistent, human, and rooted in shared values, we see system-wide engagement and impact soar. Who we're reaching? Our audiences are everyone in the CSU community: students, both undergraduate and graduate, faculty and staff at every level, and families and support systems. To get these messages out, we will be working in partnership with our Title IX and civil rights coordinators, communications teams, student organizations, clubs, residential life communities, and more. We've shown that when we activate every layer of the CSU, including alumni trustees, administrators, and partners, our messages reach further and stick longer. We'll use that same all-hands approach here. So how we'll reach them? This communication strategy will use every tool in our communications toolkit. For digital, this includes an updated, easy-to-use webpage, university intranets, targeted emails, and our system-wide newsletters. On social media, this includes Instagram, TikTok, LinkedIn, YouTube, and others, meeting people where they already are. And for in-person outreach, this includes printed materials, events, and working with student advocates. Each university will have adaptable templates and tools so they can make the message specific to their campus resources while staying connected to the system-wide campaign. As I mentioned earlier, this is our first comprehensive system-wide awareness campaign for Title IX and civil rights. Our focused deliverables will include launching a redesigned Title IX and civil rights landing page, providing every university with ready-to-use communications toolkits, and working across the system to place a "File a Complaint/Get Help" button on every university homepage. We will unify our voice with a single recognizable thread, such as hashtag #CSUKnowWhereToGo. And I'm saying that slowly, so it doesn't sound like nowhere. I'm just saying, #CSUKnowWhereToGo, so the campaign is instantly identifiable anywhere in the CSU. Communications toolkits. The toolkits we're providing are built around a human-centered communications approach. The messaging is simple, supportive, and direct, much like the flyers you see at airports that ask, "Are you okay? Do you feel safe? Here's where to go." For example, email templates will speak plainly: "Need support? Curious about your rights? Your voice matters. We're here to listen and support you." Social media posts will use short, approachable language. Everyone deserves to feel safe and included. Know your rights, get support, report concerns. One-pagers and flyers are being designed for quick scanning with checklists of protections and rights alongside easy-to-find contact and confidential support information. Digital signage will use bold universal messages: "Safe, supported, included." Hashtag #CSUKnowWhereToGo. And newsletter blurbs will start with an empathetic tone. Did you know if you're experiencing discrimination or harassment? Every CSU campus has an office that is focused on protecting your civil rights and can help. The goal is to meet members of our CSU community where they are with clear, compassionate, and accessible messaging that removes barriers to seeking help. I know that a key question is going to be, how will we know we're changing the culture? From a communications standpoint, we're prepared to measure hits to the webpage with a goal of increasing traffic by 20% in the first year, engagement on social media with a goal of increasing it by 10% in the first year, total attendance and participation at events with a goal of 10% increase in first year, and more importantly, increased use of support services, which we will work in partnership across teams to measure, including civil rights campus offices, advocates, counselors, and other support groups. With our recent budget advocacy campaign, we saw clear, measurable jumps in awareness when our messages were aligned, customized by campus, and repeated across the system. We'll apply the same discipline here because what gets measured gets improved. And now for the timeline. Apologize for the small type here. The timeline for the communications plan. In May 2025, we created a roundup and recap of the Sexual Assault Awareness Month activities around the system. We pushed out a news story and social media content to highlight the campaign. This is our first step in amplifying awareness and providing information across the system about sexual assault, which is just one of the many issues that our Title IX and civil rights offices and others are designed to help and respond to. Currently underway is a redesign of the CSU Title IX and civil rights landing page to act as the front door for students and employees who might be experiencing discrimination, harassment, sexual misconduct, sexual exploitation, dating violence, domestic violence, stalking, and/or retaliation. The goal is to make it simple for anyone to quickly find resources and assistance. Also underway is the creation of communications toolkits, which we'll be working in partnership with our universities to roll out and activate. These assets will provide Nowhere To Go information in three critical areas: Title IX and civil rights complaints, which include discrimination, harassment, and retaliation; other conduct of concern issues; and mental health resources. These will help ensure cohesive, student-centered communications across all universities. By the end of 2025, every CSU campus will have a visible Title IX and Civil Rights "File a Complaint/Get Help" button on their homepage. We will be coordinating with Title IX coordinators across the system to make sure this access point is clear and universal. Beginning January 2026, at the start of each semester, we'll roll out communications reminding faculty, staff, students, and families and their support systems about available resources. This regular touchpoint will reinforce awareness. Finally, every quarter, the chancellor's office will provide updates to Title IX and Civil Rights coordinators along with campus communication teams, and these updates will include messaging support and communications guidance to keep everyone aligned. Here's what success looks like for us for this communications campaign. Civil rights Title IX awareness is embedded in campus life. Students and employees talk openly about consent, respect, and belonging. Improved awareness of responsibilities as members of the CSU community, we are all in this together. Our relationships between the chancellor's office and campus offices are strengthened, and everyone in our CSU community knows exactly where to go when they need help with a Title IX or civil rights matter. And last, this is about more than communication, it's about trust. We know that when every university is engaged, every audience is reached, and the message is clear, we create system-wide impact. Already, campuses have made great strides in building awareness about their Title IX and civil rights programs, services, and resources for support. We're bringing this proven, all-in approach to Title IX and Civil Rights communications. When there's a system of accountability and when people know where to go to get the help they need, and experience being met with care and respect, we build a safer, more inclusive CSU. Lastly, and importantly, our Title IX and Civil Rights Communications Plan is central to the CSU's commitment to being an employer of choice as outlined in our new strategic plan. By ensuring that every student, faculty, and staff member knows where to turn for resources, feels supported in reporting incidents, and experiences a culture of care and belonging, we strengthen both our campus climate and our collective professional excellence. This work not only safeguards our community, it also directly supports stronger student outcomes and system transformation. Thank you for your time, and I turn it back to Vice Chancellor Hurtarte.
Thank you, Jean, for your thoughtful presentation and for leading this important work in close partnership with our civil rights teams. As you heard, this is more than a campaign. It's about living our commitment to make the CSU a safe, inclusive, and supportive place for every student, faculty, and staff member. This plan builds systems of care and accountability grounded in compassion, transparency, and trust, and reflects the culture we are working to strengthen across all our campuses. I'm grateful to interim senior director Jean Fratello, associate vice chancellor Patty Navalta, and her team, and to you, our trustees, for your continued support as we move this work forward. At this time, we welcome your questions and reflections.
This is an information item. I'm sure many of you have thoughts and questions. Leslie?
Thank you. I love this campaign. I love that we're using words like "safety" without flinching now, which didn't seem to be the case a year or two ago. We were, you know, there's always a concern about using those promising "safety," but I think this is a bold and compassionate campaign, and just to listen to the two of you use the words and talk about the goal of this campaign, I think is really exactly where we should be. So, thank you. I think the awareness that a communication campaign provides is awareness equals prevention, which is where we really want to be. You know, that's the best way we could keep our campuses safe is prevent anything happening to begin with. And I guess the only suggestion I have is that where we say "file a complaint, ask questions," one of the things that I've heard from students at a number of campuses is, you know, and I'm sure staff too, people have concerns, fear, about feeling like they're going to be involved in litigation. And I wonder if there's not a, you know, "file a complaint, ask questions, come talk," something that doesn't sound like you are going to be committing to, you know, to being a witness at a trial by walking in a door, something that's disarming.
Thank you. What I hear you saying is something inviting, so.
Something inviting and something that suggests, which is the case, that just because you come in to ask questions or raise concerns or find out what your rights are does not mean that you're committing to anything beyond that or anything that involves a justice system outside of the university.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just so excited. Just to add to trustee Gilbert Lurie's comments, that this is a culmination of years of hard work, and I'm just so grateful that we are at this point. Thank you, Jean Fratello, and a special thanks to ABC, Patty Navalta, and her team for getting us to this point of our goal of creating a culture of care at the CSU. I am so thrilled with this comprehensive plan and the execution. It is so well thought out, and it is something that, four years ago, we didn't think we would be at this point, but I'm just so grateful that we are here. Thank you so much, Vice Chancellor Hurtarte, for leading this along with Greg Sacks and his team, and Chancellor Garcia. Really grateful. And we have turned a chapter at the CSU. Thank you very much.
I echo the comments of my fellow trustees. I love this plan, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into ensuring that all social media platforms were used. I think that's key. We've got to meet our students where they're at. I love the idea of having a button that you can press. Now, that really makes it inviting. That's just like, it's that simple, like, they want me to talk to you. Question, who gets that when that button gets pressed? Does that go specific to the CSU that that student is from? Or can you tell me a little bit about that process?
So, the design is to make it easy. So, once the button is initiated, it's on the campus-specific website, so that Title IX coordinator would receive that information directly.
Wonderful. Again, I think this is just absolutely perfection. I love the way it's including all of our campuses, and you have templates for all of our campuses. That goes to our systemness. This is a wonderful example. And to all my fellow trustees who've been working on this before I got here, I join you in celebrating that we are definitely turning a chapter. This is the right way, and I love to see the CSU on the cutting edge and, you know, in line with where our students are at. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Chair. So, I echo my colleagues' sentiments. I think the progress here is just truly outstanding, and the message that you're conveying to the stakeholders in this, in this community of the university, I think is terrific. I have a kind of a practical question. Let me preface my question this way. I still am of the opinion that something like Title IX is really in the universe of responsibility of the presidents of the universities. We all are aware of the circumstances which caused this particular aspect of protecting the civil rights of all of our stakeholders in the university came to be. I do hope, and I've said this before, that there will come a time when this board is so confident that the changes that are being made here are such a part of the fabric of the CSU that we don't have to hear a report every single meeting. That's not to say we will not hear reports, but just every single meeting. But this presents to me an opportunity for you all to talk to the board about this concept of systemness that is now. And what is, in the recommendations from Cozen O'Connor, there was a real role for the chancellor's office in accountability at the individual campuses. And I don't know this to be true, but I would assume some of there would be a sentiment at some campuses, "Well, wait a minute, we got this, you know, we don't need you coming in from the chancellor's office. We know our community, we know our students, we don't need this." Is there any of that, and if so, how is it being dealt with?
Thank you, Chair Clark, for that question. So, since joining the CSU, my goal is to build relationships, and that's a way how you build systemness. I can assure you, I've met with almost every president regarding Title IX. We're meeting with the Title IX coordinators, and we're clarifying our roles. I know the chancellor's been very clear that the chancellor's office has oversight. And what we've been saying in those meetings with the presidents and the Title IX coordinators is about accountability. And I think that message is coming through now, and it's a real partnership. If you think about this presentation, this wasn't, "We're going to give you a template, you have to adapt it." It was, "We're going to give you the tools and adapt it to your campus," because we've realized that there's not a one-size-fits-all. But we want to do, what we want to do from the chancellor's office is provide the tools, the resources, and the support to strengthen our Title IX program. I was just talking to trustee Firstenberg today. We're never going to be done. It's a continuous improvement process. We are never going to take our eye off the ball. We are going to continuously improve our processes, through communications, through relationships, through partnerships, and so on. So, what I've, again, my short history with the CSU, we have invested intentionally into relationships, and the presidents have been great. Every president that we've set up, calls with, have absolutely known what's going on their campus. And we've been, I'll use a term from my old life, very surgical, you know? Is it response time? Is it investigations? Is it communication? Because it's not one-size-fits-all, but we've been intentional in building those relationships and strengthening them. So, it's the oversight is the co-accountability and providing the tools, resources, and support to our campuses and our partners. So, we'll continue to do that. We actually just set up, we have five regions within the CSU, and now executive advisor Pete Lim and I have set up regular meetings with the Title IX coordinators to make sure that we are working with them directly and coordinating with them. This presentation was also presented to the Oversight Committee, so we are really building relationships and strengthening. So, by the time we bring presentations or strategies, we're aligned. And I used to say this in my old role, is alignment is a beautiful thing. Once you're aligned, anything's possible. So, we'll continuously bring you, you know, strategies, and we'll bring you updates, but as you said, we are going to continuously improve this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Hurtarte. You have shown us an example of organizational change. That's how organizational change happens, and that is what's going to be going on throughout the system and everything in our strategic plan. It's the communication, it's the tools, it's showing individuals that this is for the betterment of our students and our system and each and every one of our campuses. And these presidents get it, but we all know we have people under us that the presidents need to work with and we need to work with in order to understand that it's changing. And so, I want to say thank you to you and Patty Navalta, and of course, everyone under Greg's shop and your shop for starting the change management process that is not only going to happen with Title IX, it's going to happen throughout the entire system.
Thank you again, and this is an amazing and very strategic way to get this to our students and get this to our community members as well. I think one piece I want to kind of go back to is the accountability piece, and I love the idea of working with individually the Title IX coordinators in each campus and letting them, you know, getting to see what this looks like for themselves and their communities. But I want to see kind of what are some accountability measures to see on campus? What are they doing to create networks to other campus departments or resources to be able to outreach to students through those channels as well? I think that is also very important, on top of using the CSU channels that we are trying to, you know, debuff this through, but utilizing, you know, departments of housing and things like that.
Thank you, trustee Ferraro. In the presentation, they were very intentional. It's not just the Title IX coordinators, communication teams, student organizations, clubs, and residential. So, it's a multi-disciplinary teams, so we'll be working with them as well through this process. And I know this has been a long time coming, and I do appreciate Greg, Sacks, and Patty, and Jean, because this is very comprehensive. This isn't a one-off. This is a very comprehensive, and we have some real media experts here to unpack this. So, I really appreciate the time and the thought that the team has put towards this. But to your point, this is, Title IX is everybody's accountability, and so we need to just have that mindset and that mind shift that it's not just coordinators or communication and student advocates or what have you. You know, part of this campaign is really suggesting, and what you've said is, it's everybody's responsibility.
Thank you very much. That's amazing.
I have a few concluding comments, but Chair, if it's okay, we have 10 minutes more, and I'd like to hear from several presidents about how you feel your campus is moving forward and how you feel this campaign can impact your individual communities. Please.
Good morning. Ma'am? Good morning. Thanks for the question, trustee. I just had Frank on campus this week, and what I appreciated the most was what he just replicated in his presentation, was just very authentically building a relationship with my entire team, but also making sure that we understand this is a non-negotiable topic that we have to pour into as a campus. I think that if you come on to Fullerton, you're going to find folks that are recognizing the significance of this, that this is not some kind of, you know, hidden discussion piece. It is at the forefront of thinking and behavior all across campus. So, I'm really excited about this plan and how he's approaching it as well.
Good morning, everyone. We have not had the opportunity yet. I'm one of the presidents that we've not had an opportunity to meet, so I look forward to that meeting and to understanding exactly how each campus is going to be able to develop their own materials as well, because I think the culture of campuses change from one to the next, but it is important to have the system oversight as well. I do want to bring up a point, and I know you brought it up as well. Students and faculty are going to have a heyday with the hashtag #NowhereToGo. In a moment, they are going to take what you had suggested, actually, as the K-N-O-W, and they're going to make it "nowhere to go," because that's going to give, it's going to like be an invitation to them. So, I would think twice before you use that hashtag, because I think as a communication tool, I think we can do better with that. So, just putting that out there as a preview.
Yeah, that's great feedback. We don't want to provide unnecessary angst through this campaign.
If I can... Go ahead, Vernon.
Sure. You know, in the meeting that I had with Frank and the team, it was emblematic of a real, true partnership and a real pivot in the relationship between my campus and the chancellor's office and how we approach these issues. We've talked about how we can share resources in a really, really fundamental way across the valley. That is a sea change, and to know that resources will be available in different places. So, this campaign, which we've internalized and we've articulated how we're going to approach it, is really, really productive and fruitful, but I just want to highlight how the relationship between the campuses has fundamentally changed with the chancellor's office on this issue, the collaboration, the notion that of systemness is, really comes through in practically every interaction.
Yeah, I fully agree with my colleague Vernon, but I will focus on four basic elements. Number one is how do we provide support to those going through us, whether they need to be further investigated or not? How do we decide that? That's number one. Number two, how do we educate? And how do we educate the campus at large, the students, faculty, and staff? But how do we specifically educate middle management? How do we educate the deans? A lot of these issues come out of academic affairs at my campus, and they need to be at the forefront of dealing and processing these cases in a very specific way. So one is processing with the effective support systems for the people going through that. Number two would be to educate. Number three would be to coordinate our own resources within the campus. How does, how is academic affairs speaking to HR? Because in my campus, they're separate and I'm going to join them together so that they're fully coordinated in the campus. And then number four would be, how do we coordinate ultimately with the chancellor's office? Many times our cases go to the chancellor's office, we have to wait for them to process them and then return to the campus as well. And I think these four basic elements are in process at Fresno State right now, but the main ones are processing, number one, and then educating is number two.
I want to echo what my colleague from Fresno has just mentioned. I have very much appreciated what it is the system has done, partly because it has represented for me a culture change, not only on our campus, but within the California State University system culture. My friends is that, that complex constellation of our mores, our values, our customs and traditions. But what culture does is it, it provides a general design for living and a pattern for interpreting reality. Having said that, there was an initial kind of hesitation, because I, like probably many of my colleagues, never believed in creating systemic remedies for what is an individual problem. And to the degree that we created what was an individual problem, at least preceded to me that. It makes it difficult and there's a lot of resistance to this piece, what the Cozen process has done. And I think Vice President Hurtarte really points out the notion of surgical, is it's allowed us to be very surgical in the way in which we approach this, both in terms of our intervention with students and the people who we are sworn to protect, but also on the accountability measures that allow us to look at not just, are we taking Title IX and civil rights seriously? But rather, if we do, what are the fundamental behavior changes that we are engaging in that allow us to be more timely in the way and empathic in the way we reach out to victims or people who are just filing complaints? More timely in the way in which we are processing these spaces? More accessible to folk who are both the complainant and respondents and doing that space so that there's a dual role and responsibility we have? But also communicating all this to the campuses, I think, has been magical. But for me, the biggest piece is the culture change that has happened on behalf of the system and on behalf of our individual campuses, including Cal State University Dominguez.
This issue has been at the forefront of my concerns about our campuses and our community. And I want to thank the chair for appointing me to the Civil Rights Committee, because it has allowed me to see across the system what the issues are. I think this is a major moment in the history of the CSU, because changing the culture is the most difficult thing you can ever do. And for the first time, I really think we have taken an enormous step forward. And I simply cannot thank everyone involved. And Dulcie, I don't know how you, you chair all these committees and bring everyone together the way you do, because everyone's voice is heard. And that's allowed us to get to this point. In our last committee meeting, what we talked about was how we have to send reports to the auditor, the state auditor. They told us we were not doing our job. This is a very important moment. And what we discussed in the committee was, our goal is to reach everyone and to be able to answer every, every moment when someone has a problem. We are never going to be able to say we are 100% there. These are, we're human beings, and there are always going to be some issues. What we can say today is, we have taken a tremendous step forward. And I cannot thank everyone across the campuses and, and in the chancellor's office, because I think today, we can feel we are truly going in the right direction. And I thank everyone involved. And it's 10 o'clock. Oh, I'm so, I'm sorry, listen.
I'm glad. Your comments were better to end on than, than mine. And I'm, but I echo everything that you were saying, and I also really echo gratitude toward Vice Chancellor Perez for leading our side of this, our task force, enabling us to have input along the way. In listening to the presidents, which I'm so glad you asked the presidents for feedback, two things just resonated that I wanted to point out, which is, one, I think really important when we launch a campaign, is that we're there and ready to be activated. And so I do want to say to the presidents, I think it's so important, if you don't feel you have the resources on your campus to be ready when calls come, if you don't have a full-time Title IX officer, if you don't have the staff you need for what is coming in, that there be a good way for you to alert the system. I mean, I think that that's the way we have to work together.
Vice Chancellor.
To, to alert Vice Chancellor Hurtarte to, to immediately, like, we need a way to know, because everyone is not going to be at the same place at the same time. So I think that the communication and the ability on the campuses have to be coordinated, because worst of all is to set up expectations when we're not ready. So I just want to make sure that that's coordinated. And I echo President Levine's comment, or President Levine's comment, that I have the same fear about nowhere to, nowhere to go. So I think I would look at that campaign, because the minute there's a problem, that's going to be scribbled on this stuff. But so excited, and this is a problem that is going to be, this is like setting up a healthcare system. This is not going away, and that's why I do look forward to monthly reports for a while, until we are all systems go. Because this is like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And until people feel safe on a campus, we can't really, we're not ready to learn. So I want to make sure that every campus is check, 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 all 22, and then I think we could spread out the reports. Thank you.
This concludes the committee. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Ferstenberg. And just for the record, I am absolutely behind continuing on our meetings on this on this subject every single term, probably past the time that I'm chair. So I'm perfectly comfortable with that. It's just a wish. And at this time, trustee Brar, would you please convene the committee on governmental relations?
Yes, thank you Chair Clark. Will the committee on governmental relations please come to order? Before we begin the work of the committee, I want to share that we are committed to giving an update on tribal relations and NAGPRA and CalNAGPRA compliance at each board meeting. For this board meeting, we have prepared a written report that is included in your agenda package. Please review and let us know if you have any questions. It is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Would any committee member wish to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The items listed on the consent agenda are approved. Chair Clark, this concludes the business of the committee on governmental relations in warp speed time. Thank you.
Impressive indeed. Thank you trustee Brar. Trustee Steinhouser, would you please convene the committee on audit?
Thank you Chair Clark. Will the committee on audit please come to order? It is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Does any committee member wish to remove an item for separate discussion? Is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. There is one item on today's discussion agenda. Item two of the discussion agenda is an information item regarding the status report on audit and advisory services activities. The item will be presented by Vlad Marneyskew, Vice Chancellor and Chief Audit Officer. Please begin Vlad.
Thank you trustee Steinhouser. Before proceeding, I'd like to briefly highlight enhancements to the written audit status report included in this month's agenda packet. This month's materials feature expanded narrative content and a new supplemental section spotlighting one audit focus area. The purpose of these enhancements is to provide additional context around our ongoing work and to show how it connects to system-wide priorities, emerging patterns, and key risk themes. We will continue refining our approach and plan to introduce further improvements incrementally over the coming months. We appreciate the input shared by Chair Clark and audit committee leadership, and we welcome any further feedback as we work to continuously improve our service to the board. Turning to today's presentation, while a full status report on audit and advisory services activities is included in the agenda materials, my remarks will focus on the results of our Title IX audit. This audit was included in the fiscal year 2425 audit plan, selected through our annual risk assessment process. It was conducted as a limited scope review of system-wide civil rights infrastructure in connection with a key theme from the California State Auditor's report, enhanced system-wide oversight. The specific goal of our audit was to independently evaluate the CSU's progress towards implementing recommendations from both the state auditor's report and the Cozen O'Connor system-wide assessment. This work was performed in furtherance of two important CSU strategic priorities, system-wide operational excellence, and continuous improvement. In today's presentation, I will share the results of our Title IX audit. While our written report is still being finalized and will be released shortly, we wanted to take this opportunity to provide the board with insight into areas where we believe continued oversight and support will be important. Before concluding, I will provide an overview of what comes next regarding Title IX from the perspective of audit and advisory services as we continue to support the board in fulfilling its oversight responsibilities. As described in the previous slide, the primary objective of our audit was to review and validate the implementation of recommendations from the two external Title IX assessments. The specific audit focus was the system-wide Title IX compliance infrastructure overseen by the chancellor's office. To complete our assessment, we performed a high-level evaluation of system-wide Title IX policies and processes managed by the chancellor's office civil rights team. We also sampled Title IX activity at select universities to inform our system-level assessment. These samples offered valuable insight, but were not a full assessment of any given university Title IX program. I'll now turn to the overall outcome of these procedures, followed by discussion of opportunities for improvement. Before discussing the audit conclusion, I'd like to highlight two important considerations to provide context for the audit results. First, our work was a limited scope review. We evaluated system-wide oversight provided by the chancellor's office in specific subject areas to identify strengths and opportunities for improvement. The audit did not encompass all aspects of Title IX or assess compliance programs at individual universities. Second, during our audit, we identified opportunities for improvement that management should address to fully close out the state auditor and Cozen O'Connor findings and ensure systems and processes are positioned for future success. With this taken into consideration, the overall conclusion of our audit is that governance, risk management, and control processes for the Title IX areas we reviewed are functioning as intended for the period under audit. I want to acknowledge the progress CSU has made in strengthening its system-wide oversight structure for Title IX. While there are still opportunities for refinement, a strong foundation has been established. It is important to note that this oversight structure was only recently implemented, with many key elements introduced over the past year. This represents the first phase. With that framework established, the next phase is clear, ensuring consistent and effective implementation at the university level, while continuing to enhance and refine the oversight process. Our internal audit initiated proactively by audit and advisory services and supported by management reflects a shared commitment to identifying issues early. It also provides a timely checkpoint, helping leadership gauge progress, close gaps, and make strategic course corrections. With that context, I will share key audit observations and highlight the most significant results for the board's awareness. This slide shows the 16 recommendations from the state auditor together with related audit results. Our audit did not identify any observations for 10 of the 16 recommendation areas, which were primarily related to the creation of additional system-wide policies and guidance for universities. One recommendation area, CSA 12, calls for the implementation of a unified case management system for the entire CSU. This recommendation area was not addressed in our audit, because the case management system implementation is planned for 2026. For the remaining state auditor recommendation areas, opportunities for improvement were noted in three categories: case file documentation, the annual survey, and compliance reviews. I will describe each of these three opportunities for improvement and our related recommendations. We noted opportunities for continued improvement in case file documentation. The state auditor recommended that the chancellor's office update system-wide policies and procedures, which universities primarily implemented between January and June 2024. As part of our audit, we reviewed a sample of case files initiated after August 1, 2024, to evaluate whether those policies and procedures had been applied. It is important to note that the CSU is in the process of implementing a unified case management system, which is expected to be completed in 2026. Because universities are not currently operating under a unified case management system, we expected to find some inconsistencies in case file documentation across universities, which was confirmed in our review of a sample of 41 case files. Our review of these case files indicated three areas where case file documentation could be improved: clear documentation of the rationale to investigate or not investigate, communication would involve parties, and the timeliness of case status updates and closure. It's important to note that our conclusions are based on the documentation available in the case file system. It is possible that additional actions or communications occurred, but were not recorded or saved in the system. And while documentation is important, the quality of service and meaningful engagement remain the cornerstone of an effective response. Our recommendation to system-wide management is to provide additional training and guidance to universities on documentation and retention requirements for case-related materials. Additionally, system-wide management should develop a process to periodically review a sample of university case files to ensure documentation practices are consistent and adequate. Also, as part of the upcoming unified case management system implementation, management should consider standardizing data fields across universities and configuring the system to generate and track communications automatically, to promote consistent, timely, and well-documented The second area with opportunities for improvement is the system-wide Title IX and discrimination, harassment, and retaliation annual report survey. The state auditor recommended the chancellor's office to establish a process for regularly collecting and analyzing sexual harassment data from all universities. The chancellor's office aligned the new data collections efforts with reporting requirements under Senate Bill 808. As part of our audit, we reviewed the first annual report on sexual harassment submitted by CSU to the legislature in December 2024. In our review of the inaugural In our review of the inaugural survey, we noted that the process for data review and validation could be strengthened. We identified challenges with data accuracy and clarity in samples we assessed. And while these discrepancies were generally minor, they underscore an opportunity for improvement. Our recommendation for this item include clarifying the survey instructions, enhancing training for university personnel, and strengthening data validation procedures at the system-wide level. One additional consideration, because this was the first system-wide annual survey and universities were working under tight deadlines, some challenges with data collection and interpretation were to be expected. Moving forward, refining the process will help ensure data is reported clearly and consistently across all universities. The third area with opportunities for improvement is the program review process. The State Auditor recommended the Chancellor's Office to establish a policy for conducting regular compliance reviews of university Title IX offices, which I will refer to as program reviews throughout this presentation. Program reviews are conducted by the Chancellor's Office Civil Rights Team to evaluate whether university Title IX offices are meeting relevant standards for preventing, detecting, and addressing sexual harassment and related misconduct. In fall 2024, the Chancellor's Office Civil Rights Team conducted five program reviews using a comprehensive toolkit developed by the Chancellor's Office. The toolkit included defined criteria and standardized evaluation tools. However, during our audit, we identified opportunities to enhance the process to be more objective and consistent. We noted inconsistencies in how observations and action items were reported in program review memos issued by the Chancellor's Office Civil Rights Team, and that there was no formal process to confirm that universities implemented corrective actions identified during the program reviews. Our recommendation to system-wide management is to review the current process for assignment of program reviews, enhance the existing program review framework with additional templates and guidelines, and establish a formal follow-up process for corrective actions. Implementing these actions will help to ensure that the program reviews lead to meaningful and sustained improvements. While there is still work to be done, the CSU has made meaningful progress in developing a system-wide oversight framework. The creation of the Chancellor's Office Civil Rights Team, including regional directors and dedicated civil rights attorneys, as well as the updated policies and procedures in response to the State Audit, represent major advancements. Next, I'd like to walk through our audit results relating to topics from the Cozen-O'Connor Report. Our audit included a high-level evaluation of the oversight and approval process for university implementation plans and outreach efforts. We also evaluated the use of system-wide Title IX and anti-discrimination program budget allocations for fiscal year 2425. During the audit, we identified opportunities for improvement in two main areas, the first of which relates to oversight of university implementation plans. Following the release of university-specific Cozen-O'Connor reports in July 2023, the Chancellor's Office Civil Rights Team provided initial guidance to universities on how to address the Cozen-O'Connor recommendations. They also reviewed each university's original implementation plan and the first round of biannual status updates submitted in December 2024. In evaluating this process, we confirmed that all universities developed implementation plans, which were reviewed by the Chancellor's Office Civil Rights Team, and that universities were submitting biannual status updates to the Chancellor's Office. Our review of a sample of implemented recommendations at various universities found many positive changes in response to the Cozen-O'Connor Report. For example, several universities relocated their civil rights offices to a more inviting, student-accessible location. Students and employees showed enhanced awareness due to universities' expanded prevention and education events, and departments improved coordination to ensure timely and appropriate support for involved parties. However, we identified an opportunity to further strengthen oversight over the implementation process. Specifically, we noted that while the Chancellor's Office was receiving status updates from the universities, there was no tracking system in place to monitor whether universities were making steady progress towards implementation, nor was there a defined timeframe or expectation for full implementation of the recommendations. We recommend that expectations for university implementation of the remaining Cozen recommendations be clearly documented and communicated, and that a process be established to track and monitor progress. The second opportunity for improvement relates to the consistency of campus communications regarding their efforts to respond to the Cozen-O'Connor Report. Part of the initial charge to universities was to develop a website and communication plan to inform the campus community of actions taken in response to their report. However, we found that many of these websites had not been kept up to date. In reviewing the websites, we noted opportunities for improvement in the completeness and consistency of campus communications. For example, several university websites were missing one or more key elements, such as the original Cozen report, the most recent implementation plan, or updated communications to the campus community. In this area, we recommend that system-wide management provide clear expectations to universities regarding websites and communication protocols. Our Title IX audit report is currently being finalized, and we anticipate that it will be released shortly. Throughout after, we will continue to monitor progress, provide follow-up, and report back to the board as appropriate. From a long-term perspective, Audit and Advisory Services will maintain Title IX in our annual risk assessment process and include elements of Title IX in future audit plans as appropriate. It is also important to note the recent passage of Assembly Bill 2407, which requires the State Auditor to conduct follow-up audits every three years on the efforts of the UC and CSU to address and prevent sexual harassment. The first of these reviews is underway, and Sacramento State and Cal Poly San Luis Obispo are the two universities selected for review. We are prepared to work with management to support the State Auditor's current and future reviews. Before closing, I'd like to highlight two important takeaways. First, while our audit identified opportunities for improvement within CSU's Title IX program, the report also underscores the substantial progress already underway and the strong leadership guiding that progress. Second, our audit focused on the compliance infrastructure developed at the Chancellor's Office. Our purpose was to validate CSU's assertion to the State Auditor that system-wide infrastructure has been built and to recommend improvements to strengthen that framework. It is important to note that the audit was not an assessment of Title IX controls or processes at any individual university. By comparison, the State Auditor's follow-up audit, now underway, will likely place a greater emphasis on compliance programs at individual universities. Overall, we view our audit not as an endpoint but as a tool, one that can support meaningful dialogue, foster improvement, and help guide the next steps. I want to sincerely thank Vice Chancellor Hurtarte and the civil rights professionals from across the CSU that we worked with on this audit for their openness and responsiveness in the audit process. And I now like to invite Vice Chancellor Hurtarte to provide some remarks on the audit and next steps.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Marneysku. As I mentioned, and I will continue to remind everyone, this is a continuous improvement process, and we're building a stronger system-wide foundation. And our focus is now on campuses, where students and employees are directly served. Our work centers on how campus deliver services and how the Chancellor's Office provides oversight. Oversight itself is a service, and we're strengthening it through collaboration with campus leaders, Title IX, and DHR staff. This audit has helped us refine that model. We know progress on the Cozen-O'Connor has slowed, the easy tasks have been completed, and what remains are complex, ongoing efforts. To assure you, we are continuing to focus on responding quickly and effectively to reports, investigate complaints thoroughly, increase awareness of services, and document cases consistently as communicated during this report. Our goal is simple: consistent protection of civil rights across the CSU that recognizes partnership, accountability, and shared commitment. In short, we are building a stronger, more responsive program, and together, we are working to ensure every student and every employee is supported and protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Hurtarte. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vlad. Are there any questions or comments from trustees? Yes, Darren.
Thank you, Trustee Steinhouser. And many thanks to Vice Chancellor Marneysku and his team for their very thorough work. I really appreciate the continued focus on Title IX compliance and the role of internal audit in ensuring accountability and consistency across the campuses in our system. And regular reporting to the board really helps reinforce transparency and system-wide learning by our stakeholders as well. And I also think it's encouraging to see the alignment that Vice Chancellor Hurtarte talked about between the Audit Committee and the work that the Office of Civil Rights is doing. So I think that's really commendable. I just have one question for you, and that is really dealing with, in light of the ongoing federal uncertainty around the Title IX regulations that's been going on, how is our system, how is the CSU ensuring that our audit framework remains aligned with both state and federal law and what our Office of Civil Rights is doing?
Thank you for that question. And our audits are aligned with system-wide policies. So the Civil Rights Office that will update policies and procedures are, of course, we will independently validate that those processes, procedures have been updated with the latest federal and state guidelines, but we mostly audit against those CSU policies and procedures to ensure we have compliance in that area.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Chair Clark?
Just a very quick comment. One, I want to thank you for this presentation. It's clear. I understand it. And you're right. I mean, we get these audit reports. The materials that you prepare for us, I really want to compliment you on. They're accessible, understandable, and that goes to our responsibility of accountability. If we don't understand what you're saying, we can't engage in accountability as layperson trustees. And so I just wanted to thank you for being receptive, and it's clear that you're trying to make what you do understandable for a board like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Remblin?
Completely agreed. And so Vlad, I'm sorry, because this may not be a question to you, but I don't know who it's to. Maybe it's to you, Millie. I felt this way yesterday when we were talking about the strategic plan, when we were talking about the student success framework. I'm feeling it a little bit again here. Leslie, maybe this is what you were hitting at. What is the just right amount of information? And the answer might be, it's an audit report, but I don't actually think that's the just right amount of information. And so at some point, Chancellor, something I'd love to know is, how do we as a board continue to lean in to ensure, do our due diligence and ensure oversight without getting so far into the weeds each time? And so as we think about that, I think the answer is going to be, it can't just be a, so are we good? But it can't be a, we get an hour-long report on each issue on which we care about because there is so much you all are doing every single day. And so trying to find that data source and that amount of data that ensures that we're doing our proper due diligence without getting too far into the weeds is going to be the balance we're going to strike from yesterday's set of conversations from this morning. So maybe, Chancellor, that is to you?
Yeah, the way I look at this, and I'm going to give this more thought, is, let's say we have an audit, is when we authentically say, we have, this has been met, this has not been met, and here are the reasons why, and here is how we're going to take care of it, and let you look at that area that has not been met. Because what this, remember, he's independent. He's looking at how we're doing these things. And then he's reporting to me and to you that, yes, we're okay here, here, and here, but you're not okay here. And so he's reporting to you as an independent auditor that reports also to the board, telling you that we have to look deeply in this, and asking us how we're going to follow up.
And that sounds great. I think that's, and so just, can we as a board keep coming back to, I think that's the exact right orientation? You all have a job to do, and we are here in support of the job you're doing. And I just want to make sure that we land on that just right. But your starting place here, I think, is where we probably should be landing. We shouldn't be in the weeds as a board, but we need to, when appropriate, with your all's eyes, say, oh, what's happening there, and how might we just make sure that we've got the right attention?
Thank you. Trustee Lopez?
Thanks. Thank you, Vlad. Great report, as usual. Clear, concise, to the point. Very helpful. I just want to follow up on Diego's comments, because I don't want to confuse audit results with oversight. And so this is a conversation that we ought to have as a board, because I think the audit results, as you yourself said, Vlad, is looking at what has happened and validating and telling us, you did this, but here are areas that could use some improvement, or here are some things you did really well. That's fine. The challenge that we were facing when we were talking about yesterday with the strategic plan and really the whole next phase of student success is that that's not that easily boiled down to this or that. And so the oversight has to be more about getting the kind of information, and that's what I was trying to get at. How do we come to an agreement about what kind of information comes to the board that is substantial enough and informative enough to help us, one, understand and see what you're doing, but more important, help us discuss about, are we headed in the right direction? Should we be doing course corrections? How do we think about where we are and what continues to happen? And I just don't want those two to get conflated, so that's why I had to raise my mic.
Trustee.
Thank you, and I appreciate these questions, and I think it's really worth us having further conversation about. And, you know, it might even involve looking at our committee structure differently, as we've talked about, and utilizing committees to use groups of us to further get to have conversation about issues before they come to the board. So, because right now, the committees all function as the board as a whole, pretty much. One specific question I, so I wanted to weigh in and really support us looking at what the best practices of oversight would look like. But my specific question is, I'm just curious how the State Auditors chose the campuses. Was it random, or how did they choose the specific campuses they are going to audit first?
I don't, they don't communicate that to us. They just, they pick, and they tell us which campuses they pick. And sometimes they'll pick two universities, and then they'll end up auditing the entire system anyways. So it's, you know, they have the right to audit across the entire system, and it's their decision entirely.
Vlad, thank you very much for that presentation, and I just want to take this opportunity, and I believe I speak on behalf of my colleagues, when I want to say thank you to you and your team, because audit isn't always the most pleasant word in the English language, and you and your team do it in a very proactive, collaborative manner. You use words today as opportunities for improvement, enhancement. These are great signs of continuous improvement, and so thank you for what you and your team do on a daily basis. Hearing no other comments, Chair Clark, this concludes the work of the committee on audit.
Thank you very much, Trustee Steinhouser. The board will now take a break, and we will return at 10:45.
More than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students receive grants and scholarships. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees
It's 10:45. We're going to reconvene now. Thank you all for being so prompt. Trustee Lopez, will you please convene the Committee on Finance?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Will the meeting of the Committee on Finance please come to order? It's now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Does any committee member wish to remove an item for a separate discussion? May I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? We need to take, having, are there any comments? No, I guess, hearing no further comments, I guess we need to take a roll call on the consent agenda, Ms.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee McGory?
Yes.
Trustee Adamson?
Yes.
Trustee Fajardo?
Yes.
Trustee Gilarducci?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert Lurie?
Yes.
Trustee Steinhouser?
Yes.
Trustee Mellicar? Trustee Clark, Chair Clark?
Yes.
Chancellor Garcia?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We now are moving to the discussion agenda. There is one item for discussion today. It's an action item requesting approval of the 2627 operating budget plan. This item's going to be presented by Patrick Lenz, interim executive vice chancellor and chief financial officer. He's going to be joined by Berenicia M. Eames, president of CSU LA, and Thomas Parham, president of CSU Dominguez Hill, as well as Jenny Kitchell, Assistant Vice Chancellor, Finance and Budget Administration. Interim EVC Lenz, please begin.
Well, thank you, Trustee Lopez. At our July board meeting, we reviewed potential budget priorities for the 2627 fiscal year. Those discussions form the proposed operating budget plan that we are presenting today. This plan is now before the board as an action item for your consideration and approval. The goal of today's presentation is to finalize a sustainable 2627 CSU budget that recognizes the critical revenue needed to advance CSU's commitment to student access, quality education, and meeting California and the nation's workforce needs. This operating budget plan highlights funding priorities during a time of state and federal fiscal challenges while supporting the CSU's mission and student success goals. The CSU budget also includes a request of 5.6 million as an investment by the state in the CSU strategic plan. Approval of the budget plan will give CSU stakeholders the time needed to educate policymakers on the investments required to sustain CSU's role as the state's engine of social mobility and workforce development. At the July board meeting, we reported on the final 2526 CSU budget and noted a potential loan from the state. We now have additional details, which is the 143.8 million zero-interest loan option from the state general fund. The loan does not apply to any out-year compact funding assumptions or deferral. It is strictly a one-time support and should not be viewed as ongoing revenue. I'd like to repeat that. It is strictly one-time support and should not be viewed as ongoing revenue. It is a subject, it is subject to the approval of the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, and CSU must decide whether or not it is in their best interest to take the loan by November 30, 2025. Because the loan is temporary, the full 143.8 million must be repaid by July 1, 2026, reinforcing the need to use these funds as short-term relief rather than a permanent budget solution. If CSU takes a $143.8 million loan, these one-time funds will need to be utilized in the most strategic way. Some potential options include establishing a one-time compensation pool for the 2526 fiscal year that would benefit all CSU employees. Allocating the funding to address a significant challenge of our deferred maintenance needs would be another option. And accepting the general fund loan now, but reserving the funds until there is an assurance that the state's support for the 2526 budget will not face further reductions from federal budget actions or state fiscal pressures. Lastly, I want to reemphasize that the loan would be obligated to be repaid by July 1 of 2026. Before shifting to the 2627 budget plan, we want to provide the university's perspective on how they are responding to the fiscal challenges in this current environment. Budget reduction strategies reported to the Department of Finance in January 2025 are included in this item as attachment A, and we are continuing to collect information through the fall on the challenges of the campuses. We've invited Presidents Eames and Parham to share how CSU Los Angeles and CSU Dominguez Hills are navigating the current challenges and identifying opportunities. They will highlight enrollment strategies, course availability, workforce needs, student services, as well as examples of funding changes or efficiencies that they've implemented. President Eames will begin, followed by President Parham. Afterwards, EVC Kitchell will walk through the revenue and expenditure assumptions of the 2627 operating budget plan. President Eames.
Hello. Thank you so much. Interim Vice Chancellor Lenz, good afternoon, chair, trustees, chancellors, and colleagues. It is my privilege to join you today to present the Calcia LA perspective of the 202627 operating budget plan. My remarks will highlight what we have done and what we are trying to do. Please, as always, our work is guided, is deep and committed to our students, and our mission, and our equity, and our consultation. As we reflect on our steps for Calcia LA that we have tried to take to navigate the challenges as we highlight. Thank you. First, we have aligned our major planning efforts, the academic affairs, strategic plan, strategic enrollment management master plan, and all the things. So as I said yesterday, in my comments, we are really excited to have a master plan for this system that we can follow. Second, we have managed course capacity availability to ensure we meet enrollment targets. This has required difficult but necessary adjustments to the balance of students' demand. For the 2526 academic year, we have reduced the instructional budget by approximately 8.8 million, and we are increasing course sizes and looking at course reduction. Third, we are working on optimizing operational costs. We have reduced overtime, closely monitored travel, and hospitality expenses. Fourth, we have leveraged capital outlay to address deferred maintenance, and deferred maintenance on our campus was a real issue. This has allowed us to make progress on critical facilities' needs. And I think that our campus has responded very clearly to that. has responded very clearly to that as a real issue. Fifth, we remain committed to prioritizing student success and optimizing the real issue of quantifying and asking every, 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 every campus to, campus entity, to see, what are we going to measure? How do we measure student success on our campus? And how everybody, as a collective, does that? Finally, we have taken steps to organize organizational restructuring. We organized, this has been reducing management of personnel, and we have also talked to everybody about what we're going to do. These actions, while necessary, have had real impacts. We have had to cover $6 million in deferred facilities maintenance. We have had to talk over and over and over again on our campus on this stuff. Several student success initiatives have been impacted. This represents high-impact practices, deep, deep, deep digging. This represents high impact. However, tight budgets have forced us to make hard choices, and they are all in it together, and I am very, very deeply, deeply appreciative of that. Some examples: reducing the number of specialized undergraduate research courses, increasing enrollment caps on introductory foundational courses, reducing the amount of assigned time provided to faculty, and we continue to manage staffing strengths. What I want to say is that this is not easy work, but it is the right work. It's the right work. And so I will say, Chair, Trustees, Chancellor, even as we manage all these impacts, we are forward-facing, and we're focused on student success and to focus on metrics and outcome. We are going to monitor key indicators and make data-driven decisions, allow us to adjust what we need to do, identify new process improvements, and sustain stakeholder engagements. And that's what we need to do. Additionally, last year, Cal State LA graduated more than 6,500 students, reaffirming our position as number one in the nation in social mobility. We continue to do that, and we will continue to do that. We are investing in global professional studies. We know that we need to do work in that area. We are also enhancing student experience through internships, partnerships, and programs. We will continue to support the Chancellor's Office advocacy, and we will continue to strive by doing and saying. I think that we have done the best we can in a hard situation, and it is a hard situation. But we're going to keep moving. Thank you so much.
President Parham? Finance Committee Chair, Finance Committee Chair Lopez, Chair Clark, members of the Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Garcia. As my colleague from Cal State LA says, these are difficult times, and with the cuts that we are imposing, with the reductions that we are exploring, we're getting maximum pushback. But I'm acutely aware that when it comes to budget and reduction exercises, the cost of consultation and engaging in data-informed decisions is always less than the price of intellectual and emotional inertia that incapacitates our institution from taking a critical look at self. We have a principled approach. At Dominguez Hills, our twin North Stars have never wavered. We are guided by the health and safety of the campus community and the academic quality, integrity, and transformative experiences that facilitate student success. Every decision, every one, no matter how difficult, has been anchored in these principles. In terms of our stakeholder engagement, throughout the process, we've learned that we need to lean on the strength of our community. We've convened town halls in November of 2024 and September 2025 to foster open dialogue. Guided by transparency and accountability, we've launched Conversations That Matter, a series designed to engage the entire campus community and create spaces for questions on complex and very difficult topics. We've actively collaborated with our Academic Senate and its exec committee, engaged directly with our bargaining unit members, ensured that our associated students were informed through regular budget updates, and our University Budget Committee, our UBC, also worked tirelessly to analyze and share critical information. These efforts embody our commitment to transparency, collaboration, and indeed, shared governance. Most importantly, they reflect the spirit of the Turo family coming together in challenging times with a sense of resilience, openness, and mutual respect. Now, we've had to look at cost efficiency. We've reduced administrative overhead, streamlined processes, restricted travel, analyzed short and long-term contracts, moved to a just-in-time approach to ordering supplies and contracting for services, and implemented new systems to stretch every dollar. These efficiencies have allowed us to redirect resources to programs and services that better support student success. We've also had some difficult personnel decisions. Since fiscal year 2024-25, circumstances have compelled us to make exceedingly difficult staffing decisions. We've had to non-retain 15, 1, 5, MPP managers and issued layoff notices to an additional 37 dedicated staff members of our Turo family. While six of those notices were later rescinded, the disruptions with the bumping and the sense of loss to our community were significant. We remain deeply grateful for the service and commitment and the contributions of every colleague whose role was affected. These decisions were never taken lightly, and they were made only out of a necessity to sustain our mission and preserve our fiscal integrity. In addition, we eliminated a number of vacant positions and consolidated various administrative functions. While these measures did not directly displace individuals, they nevertheless strained our capacity to expand student services and created uncertainty across our teams. We recognize the impact of these choices have had on the trust and morale of our institution, and we are committed to rebuilding that trust as we move forward together. We've also had to balance course offerings. We faced difficult trade-offs in reducing 70, 70 course sections, representing 200 fewer units on the schedule, while increasing class sizes, potentially lengthening time to degree, and increasing student loads on faculty and staff. And while these adjustments allowed us to maintain enrollment, they also mean fewer options for our students. In addition, we canceled 28, let me say that again, 28, tenure-track faculty searches. Originally, funds were set aside to hire 31 full-time faculty in fiscal year 2526. The overwhelming majority of those funds were swept from the divisions to cover unfunded mandates and declining enrollments, leaving critical gaps in the tenure-density ratios, curriculum development, advising, scholarship accreditation, and student support services. The need to postpone implementation of our doctorate in nursing practice program due to the budget reductions was an extremely difficult decision, but one I had to make as it directly affects opportunities for both students and the region. But we also had to protect core services. Over the past three fiscal years, including our current 2526 year, we have absorbed over $19 million in reductions, and there is a need to continue to right-size as we adjust to meet the needs of students. And even in the face of these cuts, we worked hard to protect the heart of our mission: faculty engagement with students, essential student supports, timely academic advising, and campus safety, because these remain foundation to student success. At the same time, we were unable to fund $4 million in critically-deferred maintenance projects and classroom and laboratory modernization. These deferrals carry real consequences: aging facilities, outdated instructional spaces, and mounting long-term costs that place future budgets and student learning environments at risk. And yet, and yet, they also highlight an opportunity to come together to secure the investments needed to modernize our learning environments, safeguard our infrastructure, and ensure that the physical spaces at California State University Dominguez Hills reflect the excellence of our faculty and the aspirations of our students. So now, we're reimagining the future. Even as we navigate a fiscal vortex of declining enrollments, unfunded mandates, insufficient state funding, and compensation pressures, we will not and are not defined by what we have lost, but what we continue to achieve together. Our student retention gains include an increase of not three, not five, but eight percentage points last year, and we are poised this year to gain more than six and a half points for a total of 14.5 percentage points in two years pending census verification this next week. In 2025, the Turo Nation, 4,275 students graduated. We transformed lives. 3,000 and a little more proudly walked the stage across six commencement ceremonies, including an 80-year-old Miss Carolyn Woods who earned her bachelor's degree. We just set a new record. That is her picture on your screen. Her story reminds us that it is never too late to pursue dreams, and the Turo Nation's resilience spans generations. As the most successful campus in the region, this is the spirit of the Turo Nation. We are resilient, we are determined, and future-focused. Every resource we steward is directed towards strengthening our student success. And as we reimagine the future of CSUDH, one thing is non-negotiable: we will not sacrifice quality. So with your continued partnership, we can ensure that CSUDH not only weathers this fiscal storm, but emerges stronger with facilities, with programs, and with opportunities that are worthy of our student promise. I'm reminded as I close, the great Langston Hughes. We should hold fast to dreams, for if they die, life is just a broken-wing bird that cannot fly. In the Turo Nation, we have been in the business of preventing wings from breaking and mending those that do. So as we plan for the budget of 2026-27, I respectfully ask for your continued advocacy at the system and state levels to champion the investment in our people, our programs, and our physical campus that will allow Cal State University Dominguez Hills and all of our CSU colleagues across the system as a whole to thrive for generations to come. Let me now turn the presentation over to AVC Kitchell. Jenny?
Thank you Presidents Eames and Parham. We appreciate that. The 2627 Operating Budget Plan presented today emphasizes financial stability by reinforcing core commitments rather than new initiatives. The detailed Operating Budget Plan can be found in Attachment B of your Board Packet. The CSU's current base budget is just under $8.5 billion. This plan includes $597 million in proposed strategic investments that are driven by restoration of state funding and compact commitments and modest tuition growth. Our total budget would increase to just over $9 billion, or 7%. In the next several slides, I'll explain the revenue assumptions and critical budget priorities included in the $597 million plan. To begin, here's a snapshot of our 2627 revenue assumptions, which total just over $597 million and include four main categories: restoring the $143.8 million general fund reduction from 2526, full year-four compact funding of $252 million, the scheduled tuition increase providing $175.8 million, and finally, 1% enrollment growth, generating approximately $25 million. These categories remain unchanged from July, though we've adjusted the figures with current data. As you can see, 2/3 of these revenue assumptions depend on state funding decisions, which will directly determine the level of expenditures we can ultimately fund. Our expenditure plan totals $597 million and is structured in the two tiers presented in July. We have almost $324 million in baseline commitments, which are unavoidable mandatory costs that will be incurred regardless of any new revenue, and $273 million in essential priorities, which represent investments that reflect CSU's core values. This balanced approach ensures we meet fundamental obligations while advancing the university's goals. The following slides break down each tier. The $324 million of baseline commitments represents 55% of the expenditure plan. Again, these are required operational costs the CSU must pay regardless of funding levels, and they tend to grow each year. Key baseline commitments are nearly $180 million for employee compensation already committed in prior years, and include the 2425 faculty and staff increases and 2526 CSUEU steps implementation, and financial aid to increase SUG, or our State University Grants, tied to the tuition rate change, and rising operating costs such as inflation, health premiums, and utilities. Since the July Board meeting, we've refined these amounts. For example, the health premiums are lower than previously presented because CalPERS finalized employer rate increases at 2.5% instead of the 9% we had projected using prior-year trends. This provides some relief, but baseline commitments remain significant at almost $324 million. So now, let's take a look how we plan to invest in essential priorities. So beyond those baseline commitments, just over $273 million in essential priorities have been identified, all contingent on securing additional state funding. And these priorities are $176 million for a 3% compensation pool for all employees, $57.8 million to grow enrollment by 1%, and $8.4 million to expand State University Grants to support that growth, $25 million in debt service for new facility and infrastructure projects, and finally, $5.6 million in initial funding to advance the CSU's strategic plan. Together, these investments strengthen academic quality, expand student access, and advance our mission. They are also directly tied, they are also directly aligned with the new system-wide strategic objectives of advancing economic mobility, ensuring affordability, being an employer of choice, and amplifying statewide impact, which were shared with the Board In addition to the $597 million ongoing increase, we are recommending a $1.1 billion one-time state funding request for critical facility and infrastructure projects. While significant, this request would address less than 13% of our backlog. As you heard yesterday from Trustee As you heard yesterday from Trustee Adamson, the CSU faces an $8.6 billion deferred maintenance backlog, which is expected to grow by more than $400 million per year as facilities age and inflation increases costs. Many buildings are more than 50 years old, outdated, and in some cases, unsafe. This investment is vital to ensure safe, modern academic environments, strengthen our seismic resilience, and support high-demand programs like engineering, nursing, and the sciences. Without it, outdated infrastructure will continue to disrupt learning and limit the CSU's ability to provide students and faculty with the facilities they need to succeed. With that, I'll turn the presentation back to EVC Lenz to walk through the CSU's advocacy priorities for the CSU budget.
I too want to express my thanks to Presidents Eames and Parham for their presentations today, and thank you, EVC Kitchell. Looking ahead, the CSU budget advocacy is focused on two immediate steps. First, we must restore the $143.8 million general fund-based budget reduction that took place in the current fiscal year. Without the restoration, programs supporting student success will be at risk, and budget reductions assumed to be one-time in nature will be permanent. Second, we need to ensure that the state honors the year-four compact funding, which includes a full 5% base increase of $252.3 million. This investment is critical for stability, quality, and growth across the CSU. Together, these two actions are essential to sustaining CSU's role as California's greatest driver of student success and workforce preparation, powered by our world-class faculty and staff who deliver on that mission every day. Now, let's look at why this matters for the CSU and California. Advocacy matters because it ensures California's continued investment in the CSU. The CSU is the state's leading engine of upward mobility. In fact, I would indicate that it is the leading engine in the country for social mobility and upward mobility for our students. We educate California's future leaders, we fuel statewide economic growth, and we prepare the workforce for tomorrow. For every dollar invested in the CSU, nearly $7 in economic impact is generated, creating jobs and generating tax revenue that benefits and ripples across families, communities, and industries statewide. Sustained investment preserves access, protects academic quality, and advances equity. That's why your action today is so important. Approving this plan sends a strong signal that the CSU will continue to deliver affordable, high-quality education for all Californians. The approval of the 2627 budget will enable a fall campaign to educate, advocate, and engage policymakers with the goal of securing their support for the CSU funding priorities. We will also assess potential federal funding issues and monitor the state's fiscal condition in the event of any mid-year changes to the CSU's current budget assumptions. One thing is for certain: we must be prepared with a planning process that includes strategic trade-offs and balance administrative, academic, and student service priorities to address the future challenges to state and federal support of the CSU mission. Trustee Lopez, that concludes our presentation, and EVC Kitchell and our two presidents and I are happy to take your questions or address the trustees' concerns.
Thank you all for your presentations, and special thanks to Presidents Eames and President Parham. You're representing your colleagues because I know that your story is the story of everyone behind you. But I think it's important, not just for the board but for anybody listening, to hear every time that this has not been, we don't enter any year in as if nothing has happened, that there has been an awful lot of hard choices made over the last two and three years, almost since I've been on the board. And it's, you describe very aptly what it takes and what it means to take those hard cuts and hard choices. So thank you very, very much. Before proceeding with questions and comments, I need a preliminary motion to approve this item.
So moved. Second.
Great. Okay. Now that we have a motion and a second, I'll open it up for comments. Before I do, though, I'd like to just take the prerogative and make a few myself. First of all, I just want to continue to underscore what the chancellor said yesterday, what Patrick is saying today, or has been saying all along, and that is, there's an awful lot of misinformation about what happened to our budget this year. Our budget this year was not fully funded. And the reason this is important is because the stories that you heard from the presidents are cuts that they made in years when our budget had been funded. In fact, we're starting this fiscal year $143 million in the hole. So already, we're in the hole, right? It's, now, the legislature did throw out a, I don't know what to call it.
Revenue option.
Revenue option. Thank you, Patrick. That's the correct word. A revenue option, which was to offer a loan, a zero-interest loan, to a stopgap, to bridge, so that we could start the year as if we were starting fully funded. But it's not real, because the gap is there. The loan is just that, a loan, a one-year loan that, as Patrick says, needs to be paid. I don't think there's anybody, any one of us, and I know Trustee McGory, who's on Zoom, will follow me, I'll pick, I'll let him speak after I'm done. But the loan was a gimmick. It's a gimmick. It's a budgetary gimmick. And in good times, it's a good gimmick. In good, in good times, if you, if you project that there are good times coming, having a stopgap loan is a good thing. You know, because things are going to get better, and we can pay the loan back, and we're not going to suffer. But that's not what we're facing at all. The state is facing some really tougher times ahead. And so the odds of the state really living, being able to fulfill any commitments that it has is really, really questionable. It leads me to the other point and to the last point that Patrick made. This is a time for us to really come together as a family, as a CSU family, on advocacy. It showed, last year, we showed what we could do together to advocate for the CSU. I just want to remind everybody that if nothing else happens, our costs keep going up, right? So we can't afford, certainly not the cut that we received, but we certainly cannot afford not to have any increases at all, because our costs continue to go up, and the consequences are further and further cuts in years to come. So we all need to understand that and come together as a family. Patrick is looking very seriously at the loan options. And as he said, there are options. It's part of being prudent and thoughtful and strategic and thinking about how we put together for this year a revenue plan that will help us navigate these choppy waters and at least give us a chance at what comes next in the year, given, given, given the storms that we foresee coming down the state, given, given the state situation. So I know this is, this won't be easy, but I have full faith and confidence in the CSU family. So, Trustee McGory, I'm going to call on you first, and I'm, I'll go around the room here for comments, so.
Sorry I can't be there today. I'm stuck in an arbitration that started on Monday, but, you know, I've been involved in budgeting, public sector budgeting in California for a long, long time, longer than I want to admit. And this is, this is the most creative budgeting I've seen the legislature engage in. When Trustee Lopez chaired the committee to look at really the state of our budget a couple of years ago, we discovered that we had a $1.5 billion structural deficit. With the cuts that have occurred and the lack of funding for all the initiatives that we've undertaken, that deficit has grown by another $800 million. It's more than a 50% increase over the last couple of years. So now, we've got a $2.3 billion structural deficit. And that sounds really nice in this, in this room and these meetings, but what that translates to on the campuses is incredible deferred maintenance, really badly maintained buildings and physical plant, cutting courses, increasing the size of the classes, freezing faculty and staff positions, and some campuses actually laying people off. And we're, now, we're looking at another giant deficit in the state budget overall in the general fund over the next couple of years. And yet, we keep on hearing about promises for funding from a compact that has been violated this year. Instead of a $250 million increase, we got to start out with a $375 million cut, which was mitigated to $145 million. And we built up a budget based on these promises in the compact. We gave salary increases based on that, that now we can't afford, and we were having to reopen contracts. So there's just a lot of pain here. And I just got a quick question before I say anything else to Patrick. If, Patrick, there is no increase in funding in next year's fiscal budget, fiscal year budget, and we take this, and we, we take this loan, what is the expectation for repayment of that? Do they think we're going to jump in, we're going to have to dig into our general fund and come up with $145 million if they don't provide us any funding? I'm unclear how the loan gets repaid in light of these dire fiscal circumstances.
Well, first, Trustee McGory, thank you so much for reminding the board of the overall structural deficit that the CSU faces. Because when you hear testimony, when you hear public testimony, they focus on one-year increments. So they're only looking at $144 million reduction or misrepresenting the fact that the CSU budget was, was made whole. And we need to continue to remind the board, and we need to continue to remind everyone else, that the work that was done by the Financial Sustainability Task Force identified years of unfunded mandates, years of compact agreements, where the state was not able to fully fund them through the term of those agreements, and the overall challenges we face. It's just not $144 million. You're absolutely right. It's 2.3 billion plus $144 million. Now, to answer your question, I too have been doing higher education, public finance for a long time. I would like to think that there are going to be some options available to us next year. Clearly, there have been times when the state has forgiven the loan. I know, I'm almost certain we won't be in that position, but I'm not going to rule out anything at this point. There may be an option for the state to allow us to pay the loan over time, or at least allow us to pay the loan over a 12-month period of the next fiscal year, which would somewhat mitigate, you know, that payment having to be made in full on July 1, or by July 1. So we're really going to have to have a clear understanding of the state's fiscal condition as we move through this fiscal year. If, in fact, there is a special session to deal with either reductions at the federal level or a state fiscal condition that continues to go south, I am, I am just as concerned as you are, sir, about the ability to even maintain what we've already achieved in this 2526 budget. But we're going to have to monitor this as we go along, because we've just got overwhelming demands. You know, overwhelming demands that we're, we're trying to satisfy, and a lot of pressure to do so, particularly when it comes to compensation and at the collective bargaining table. So it really is going to have to be a strategic approach that recognize, we will be able to repay the loan. I am confident we'll be able to repay the loan. It will not come without pain. That is guaranteed. But if I thought that we were not in a position to repay the loan, my recommendation would be different.
I guess I appreciate your honesty, Patrick, but this is, this budgeting process that the state legislature is engaged in and the governor's office, it's bizarre. I mean, this is Alice in Wonderland. I mean, we've got so many deferrals of funding for the CSU, I can't even keep a track of which fiscal year we're going to supposedly get repaid, and yet, all of us sit here, and we know, we're not going to get repaid. I mean, that's, we, we need to get our base funding approved, and that is, that's a challenge by itself. I mean, the legislature expects us to increase enrollment, increase compensation, meet the goals of the, of the graduation initiative, and cut our funding. I don't know what's wrong with their calculators. I mean, you can't have all these initiatives going on and all these requirements for the system and cut funding. I mean, it doesn't work that way. And somehow, we, we're not, we're not making our case clear enough. I think Sonoma State came as a shock to them, but it really shouldn't have come as a shock to them. If you keep cutting funding, this is, you know, Sonoma State's the beginning of what's going to happen in the system. We're going to have to make some serious, significant cuts, and, and it's really unfortunate. And the presidents are doing one heck of a job to keep up with this, to keep on throwing this, increasing this structural deficit just means the pressure keeps on building on each of our campuses to meet all of these requirements and initiatives and have, and not have the funding to do it. So I just think we need to be very cautious as we go forward, both on the employee front as well as these other initiatives. And at some point in time, we've got to work at catching up on the, on the deficit. It's just, the legislature's going to, they, they, we've got to make a very strong case this year. And we're, you know, we are the economic engine of the state. We are, we should be one of the top priorities in the general fund budget, and yet, we continue to get cut. And we've got to make a better case. We've got to start the pressure immediately on the legislature to understand what's happening on our campuses, and that Sonoma State is just the beginning of a series of problems that are going to happen across the system. And we are so proud of what we've accomplished here in the university, and to see it begin to deteriorate, I think all of us will, will feel the pain, and more than anything else, the students. And what's ironic is the students are paying more. Each year, they're paying more. The state keeps on cutting us, and the tuition keeps on going up based on the plan that we adopted. So the students are carrying their, their load, but the adults are not. And we've got to figure out how to, how to make this work better and get the funding that this system deserves to have.
Trustee McGory, there's another piece to this that I'm on a, and EVC Kitchell and I were staffed to the task force group in, in doing the, the work that produced the report. And what is evident is, we've been very generous as a university system. We've watched time and again, bills go through the legislature, requests go through the legislature for the CSU to do more without any funding. And we've been good stewards. We've tried to be everything to everyone, and we do, we cannot afford that luxury any longer. So we've got to look at ourselves as well, and we've got to set some priorities. And if the priorities are, for instance, in the strategic plan, we've got to focus on those priorities and say to ourself, what's lower on the list that either wasn't funded and we shouldn't be doing anymore until we get that funding, or we simply have to make choices? And, and we're going to be doing that. But, but that, but, but that was an exercise in my mind long before we took the cut or had the compact deferral. So I agree with much of, much of what you're saying.
I think we're in the best position today, after yesterday, to really make those kinds of choices and trade-offs as we go forward. I think we just needed to get to this point that we know we were going forward, what we're going to keep doing, what we're going to do more of, and what we're going to do less of. Because one way or another, those are the choices that we're going to be Because one way or another, those are the choices that we're going to be facing going forward. I have trustee Steinhouser.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Jack, for your comments, and trustee Lopez, and thank you to the team for your presentation. Yesterday, trustee Lopez was Debbie Downer, and I'm going to be David Downer today, okay? I'm a fiscal realist. You know, I had to cut over $200 million as a superintendent in a great recession. So I know what the team of our presidents and their staffs are going through. The next two years, as trustee McGory has said, are going to be very difficult at the state level. We are in some serious financial issues, not only as a state but as a nation. And it's probably going to get much worse before it gets better. So I just want everyone to know my thoughts. One is, I'm not a supporter of the loan for many reasons. However, I'm a trustee, and I will support the decision of this group. And the reason I don't support the loan are for a couple of reasons. One is that it's a hit to the bottom line. It's an absolute hit to the bottom line. Secondly, I totally appreciate that slide that was up there, one-time money should never be spent on ongoing cost. And I'm going to say that again. One-time money should never be spent on ongoing cost. However, when we get money, people tend to forget that, okay? And I understand that immensely. However, I just, the pain that we're receiving today with the layoffs and the cuts and everything are terrible. They're going to get worse. I'm just a realist. We're going to have some really big wins in front of us. And at the same time, we have more than fulfilled our promise. Our enrollment is way up, and we are the economic engine. So I just, I don't usually talk a lot at these meetings. I just have to say that. However, I will support whatever decision that this group decides. Chancellor, you know I have your back 100%, but I am deeply concerned that if, you know, if we, for the funds we get next year, you folks did a remarkable job in the advocacy and to reduce our cut. I think it's going to be 10 times harder this year, to be honest with you, just because of all the pressures of the cuts from the federal level and our state and so on. So I don't mean to be a downer by any means because I love this system and I am behind it 100%, but I'm deeply concerned of what our lawmakers are doing right now because of the challenges that they're facing. Thank you.
Trustee Fong.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Lopez and trustee McGory, for explaining and putting things into context of where we are. Trustee Lopez, can you remind me where we are in our deficit? Is 2.3 now?
2.3 now.
$2.3 billion in deficit. And that, we as trustees, we are fiduciaries of the California State University. And I am very concerned that repaying the loan is not a responsible response when we are in this economical position.
Can I just interject here on what the structural deficit means versus, you know, paying a loan, cash out of pocket? The structural deficit means that our costs are running $2.3 billion higher than the revenues we have. And everybody manages that differently. And so what they do is they manage it by not doing certain things, or by taking, for example, maybe funds from endowments or other things. That's how they end up paying for that. So it's not, it's not like a household budget. That 2.3 isn't money we're paying. It just means, that's what the realistic cost is. So part of the advocacy has been, needs to be to educate Sacramento, to Patrick's point. They're getting big bangs for their bucks at CSU. You know, for every dollar that they're giving us, we're giving them 2.3, I don't know what the ratio is, a factor of more in terms of services and students and things that we're doing. So that's what, we need to make sure that our revenues, that they begin to pay the freight that it costs to operate the CSU. So that's, I wanted to separate that from the discussion. I think we need to come back to the loan discussion, perhaps, as an item, and how, what that means, and the pros and cons of considering that loan. At this point, it's a consideration, and how we would pay it back, if you don't mind.
Right. Well, in support of what trustee Steinhouser is saying, is that as fiduciaries, yes, we can repay this loan, but it does not make economical sense of what, as you say, vice chancellor, is that it will be a lot of pain. It is beyond that. I believe it's irresponsible for us to do that. I do have a question regarding the CSU essential priorities. And by the way, this presentation was excellent. Thank you very much for the clarity and comprehensive explanation. But with the CSU essential priorities, the $273.4 million, there is a 3% faculty-staff compensation pool of $176.6 million. Could you please expand on that?
So in previous budgets, and making assumptions that the state would be able to meet the compact commitments, the compensation pool had been around 5%. That's been the recommendation, and that's kind of the starting point at the collective bargaining table. Of course, you're well aware that requests have come in more than doubled in that in some years, and not really realistic with any revenue that the CSU was going to receive from the state. We utilized 3% because we did build it on the assumption that we would be repaid the 143, and that we would get the 252 for year for compact funding. But we were also trying to be just a little bit more conservative, knowing the challenges that we were going to face, and setting realistic expectations out there. Expectations that were tied to these funding challenges, to indicate that we would be in a position, even if we received all the funding, to do 5%, given a lot of the things that we're talking about here, of the other cuts that have happened at the campuses and the other needs that we need to fund, just didn't make a lot of sense with this recommendation. So that's why we chose 3%.
Trustee Rambo.
I understand yesterday why, Julia, you were like, these two things need to be paired together. You were spot on. I want to appreciate and say, I think this is the right advocacy plan. I think it's the right operating budget. I think it's the right advocacy plan. And part of the reason I think that is because the strategic plan that you put together, chancellor, is the right strategic plan. And that strategic plan doesn't just happen. Patrick, you use the word generous. I might reframe that a little. We have been, on the backs of our presidents, our faculty, and our staff, taking on promises. We will do these things without the funding that it truly takes to do it. The deficit that we're talking about is really because our faculty, our staff, and our presidents have found creative ways to continue to do the things we've committed to doing without the funding that we need to get there. So in some ways, we know that the budget next year is going to look even worse than it looked this year at the state. And what we're asking for is a beginning down payment on what we truly need to get back to the funding that we really need to operate and meet our strategic plan. And by the way, this board yesterday said we absolutely need to operate and drive toward that strategic plan. So to me, this is a perfectly realistic vision of what a down payment, a starting way for the state to begin to invest in the ways they should have for years been investing in the work we're doing. So with deep appreciation, I think this is exactly the right plan. And hearing today from two of our presidents about the creative ways you all have found to do this was so helpful, and I hope that some of the folks up in Sacramento are listening because the consequences of those creative solutions are that real people are stressed and challenged and overburdened, and that inevitably, we're going to lead to things like cutting courses that students need to move toward graduation in a timely manner. And yes, we can use some of the creative solutions we talked about yesterday, online courses at one campus being offered to students at every, but those alone can't get us there. We need to both be creative and get back to the funding that we truly need to do this work. And I stand ready to advocate both for that creativity. We shouldn't stop being creative. We shouldn't stop doing those things. And we absolutely need to advocate, and we need our partners to advocate in getting us the funding we need.
Chancellor.
Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor Flens and the entire team, for a wonderful presentation. I just want to remind us that in addition to the amazing work our presidents do, there's a chancellor's office that does system-wide things for our presidents and our campuses. When you look at HR, when you look at IT, when you look at Title IX, which, all of that is coming out of the chancellor's office. We cut 8%. We cut $18 million out of the chancellor's office in order to make sure that we too are feeling the pain. But what that means is things like what we talked in Title IX, that's so wonderful. When we talk about Cal-NACPA and NACPA, that we are, by law, have to do, that is not funded, we've got to do that. And so I just wanted to put that on the table, as well as we talk about the tremendous challenges that the entire system is having. Even the academic senate took an 8% cut in the office. So we're all, all trying to do the best we can and still serve our students, faculty, staff, and communities.
Trustee Gilbert Lory.
Thank you. I don't have questions. I appreciate the presentation, and I just wanted to amplify some of the comments because I still sit here, because this is an advocacy opportunity, and I listen, and it seems like there is magical thinking going on, that we can continue to make cuts and be the Cal State University system that we're so proud of. I've been on this board for three years, and during that time, we've spent most of our time figuring out what needs to be done in the 2020s to serve our college, to attract students to come to college, California students, to stay in college, to graduate, and go on to get jobs. We feel like we have come up with a lot of those answers. This is the next generation of our state. So it seems so clear to me, to us, that their success, the success of the young people in this state, is the success of this state. This is how the state is going to get money back. They are losing money. They're in a difficult situation, but if every $1 invested in us brings $7 to them, that seems to be, that math makes sense to me. So I look at this budget, I say, we're funding a $5.6 million strategic plan in our budget, but that plan involves services. And then I listen to our presidents, who say they've already had to cut services. They've had to cut classes, so they have the students that we've worked so hard to attract with fewer options, and that it could take longer to graduate. We're working against ourselves. We need to come together before these cuts just get made. We need to sit down, and maybe it's all the higher education systems together, sitting down with the state, but we need to figure out how to make finite dollars in the state go, in large part, we're streamlining as much as possible, but we are educating the middle and lower-class people of our state. We're educating first-in-their-families-to-go-to-college. We're educating people who do not have other options, and we're creating all the potential in the world for them. So if we want to bring those, if we want to be the kind of state that educates the heart of our state, we need to fund the CSU. It is not going to fund itself.
Trustee Burn.
Thank you for the report. Thank you for all the information you've shared with us. Trustee Gilbert Lory, you are correct. CSU is an investment for the state of California. And when I put on my hat as a business owner, you would never say no to a 0% interest loan, never. I'll be a little bit of an optimist, kind of the opposite of everyone today, and ask a question. What are the chances that our 0% loan can turn into a forgivable loan? And what does advocacy look like on our end to see if we can work on that happening? So I guess that's my question.
Well, as I indicated earlier, there is precedent for this.
Can I?
Trustee, we had this conversation last night, and his experience has been down the path of taking these loans, but having them forgiven, and I've been through that same experience. I just think the possibility, given the fiscal challenges the state faces, it's pretty remote. It's not that we couldn't advocate, and we should. We should absolutely advocate for that forgiveness, but I think that's going to be a challenge for the state. And so we, I do believe, though, that there may be some other mechanisms in the repayment that may be afforded to us.
Thank you. And I'm conscious of time here, because I always run over time, but I want to separate the issues. One is next year's budget, and that's what the action before us is, and we'll get a roll call here going on. Second issue is a loan which is a this-year issue. And what I think, this is an issue that I don't think is, we have enough information today, really. I think this is an issue that Patrick and the chancellor need to continue to think through and look at the options, and look at the consequences and the strategies, and the risks and rewards. Because this isn't just about the money. It's also about people out there, influential people out there, saying, we gave this to you so you would take it to do what you need to do. So we need to think about all that a little bit more, right? So I would recommend that this board continue to let Patrick and the chancellor think and worry, and look at all, and scope out this loan. I don't think there's any one of us who don't agree with trustee McGory, that this budget and the loan idea and the way it was structured just was... Magical realism is something, as a Colombian, I'm really familiar with. So I was, I understood that, you know? But so for now, let's have a roll call on the action before us, which is approving... Oh, I'm sorry, trustee McGory, I didn't see your...
Thank you. Mine's super quick. So thank you for the presentation, and I just have a question in terms of the CSU essential priorities on Slide 11 on the graph. And so yesterday, we presented the student success framework. And could you just share some background as to why it's not explicitly stated on the CSU priorities for '26-'27? Or is it included or embedded in the CSU strategic plan?
I apologize. I'm not hearing your question.
So could you share some background as to why the student success framework priorities and needs aren't explicitly included in the CSU essential priorities on this slide?
Well...
So is it embedded in the strategic plan?
It's embedded in the strategic plan. One of the things we're doing is bringing together everything under the strategic plan. So those are the priorities I'm going to move forward, and that's where it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Can I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Trustee McGory.
Yes.
Trustee Adamson.
Yes.
Trustee Pajardo.
Yes.
Trustee Giller Ducci.
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert Lory.
Yes.
Trustee Steinhouser.
Yes.
Trustee U Melikar.
Yes.
Chair Clark.
Yes.
Chancellor Garcia.
Yes.
The motion passes. The motion passes.
Okay, the budget is approved. And Chair Clark, that concludes the business of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, trustee Lopez. And I want to thank all of the trustees and as well as those members of the Office of the Chancellor who put this together. This is an extremely thoughtful, extremely important conversation that will continue on. So thank you all very much. And with that, at this time, will the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the California State University please come to order? Ms. Coral, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Adamson?
I remain here.
Vice Chair Ramblah?
Here.
Trustee Braar?
Here.
Chair Clark?
Here.
Trustee Pahardo?
Present.
Trustee Firstenberg?
Here.
Trustee Fong?
Here.
Chancellor Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Gilarducci?
Here.
Trustee Gilbert Lory?
Here.
Trustee Wahado?
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis?
Present.
Trustee Lopez?
Here.
Trustee McGory?
Here.
Trustee Najabat? Governor Newsom. Trustee Rodriguez? Speaker Rivas. Trustee Steinhouser? Superintendent Thurman? Trustee Vargas? Trustee Yu Malakar?
Here.
Chair Clark, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We're going to, in just a moment, go to our consent agenda. However, I made an error during the Committee on Governmental Relations. I did not see that trustee McGory had, would like, have liked to have made a comment. The action's already taken. But I do want trustee McGory to have the opportunity to make the comment on the governmental relations item he would like.
Let's have a quick comment on AB 662 on the Intergovernmental Relations Report. We had a recommendation pending. And this bill would create a task force, it's in San Diego, which would create a task force to study and come up with a plan for an intersegmental, this is higher red talk, an intersegmental mixed-use education facility. And what's happening is Chula Vista's set aside about 300 acreage for university purposes. Originally, it was, they lobbied for a CSU-Chula Vista. That wasn't funded. And I think we took the position, we didn't have the funding for that. And so now they're working on a plan to collaborate with UCSD, CSU-San Marcos, San Diego State, and South Western College to build a multipurpose university campus with all of these institutions represented. The work has already started for both San Marcos and San Diego State. The bill would create a task force that would then report back to the legislature by July 1, 2027, as to how this would all work. And I found out yesterday from Nathan that the bill's passed the Assembly and Senate unanimously. It's on the governor's desk. And I, as an individual trustee, would recommend, advocate for the governor to sign this and make this happen. And I think we should keep the trustees informed of the progress of this task force. Thank you.
So noted, and thank you. And again, my apologies. And with that, it's time for the board to consider today's consent agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Lieutenant Governor, I see you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Under the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel, the two items I would like to remove for a separate vote are the executive compensation issue for the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs as well as the executive compensation item for the President of Cal Poly-Humboldt.
Those items will be removed. And we'll address those as a separate discussion item. May I have a motion to approve? You're welcome. I may have a motion to approve the remaining items listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being no further discussion, Ms. Coral, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Adamson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramblah?
Yes.
Trustee Braar?
Yes.
Chair Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Pahardo?
Yes.
Trustee Firstenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Chancellor Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gilarducci?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert Lory?
Yes.
Trustee Wahado?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis?
Abstain.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee McGory?
Yes.
Trustee Steinhouser?
Yes.
Trustee Yu Malakar?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. It's been requested that Item 2, Executive Compensation, Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, California State University, from the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel, be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion. In order to facilitate that, before we proceed with any questions or discussion, may I please have a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. I will now open the floor for discussion. Lieutenant Governor, I see you. Yes, please.
Thank you. You know, we've just had a very long and serious conversation about the budget and about potential cuts. And so while I understand that adding a position may have a lot of really valid reasons, it seems to me that when we're cutting other, potentially cutting other elements of our budget, campuses are looking at already making major cuts, it just concerns me to be adding staff at this time. So I will be a no vote on that item.
So noted. Further discussion, Ms. Vice Chair.
I appreciate that perspective and coming out of education and knowing, having worked so closely with Nathan and Dillsey over the last few years as the Chair of Ed Policy, I'm deeply appreciative to our team and extremely excited for what Junius is going to bring to help us lean into so much of the strategic plan and so much of the work that the chancellor's office and each of our campuses is already working on. So I think this is one of those moments where we have to lean into our academic affairs.
Trustee Adamson? I have a comment. Lieutenant Governor, I receive what you're saying. At the same time, we heard from the chancellor that they are being fiscally responsible and are being strategic in accordance with our newly endorsed strategic plan. And one of the things, I'll be very direct about it. And before I do, I would like to ask our Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, are these pay rates that were proposed, are these comparable or consistent with comparable institutions and our own policies?
Chair Clark, they are.
In that regard, if we're going to hold the chancellor accountable, not, no. We are going to hold the chancellor accountable. I mean, that's just not an option. I believe that the board really should provide the chancellor's office with the resources it needs to do the job that we expect them to do. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? If there is not, I believe it's time to call the roll.
Trustee Adamson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramblah?
Yes.
Trustee Braar?
Yes.
Chair Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Pahardo?
Yes.
Trustee Firstenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Chancellor Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gilarducci?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert Lory?
Yes.
Trustee Wahado?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis?
No.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee McGory?
Yes.
Trustee Steinhouser?
Yes.
Trustee Yu Malakar?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. On to the next item. It's been requested that Item 3, Executive Compensation, President California State Polytechnic University Humboldt, from the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel, be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion. In order to facilitate that discussion, may I please ask for a motion? And I have a motion in a second. I will now open the floor for discussion. Lieutenant Governor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So again, on this one, it's related to the budget, which is that I understand that we are not going to be increasing salaries for the non-executive employees as a result of budget cuts. And so while I have absolutely no issue with the prospective candidate or the approved candidate to be the new president, I think having automatic salary increases or just an assumption that we're going to have salary increases from the previous president, I'm concerned about that as well. I think it just is incumbent upon us that if we are looking across the system at most of the employees and we are not going to increase pay, that we should be mindful that those, whether they're new positions, whether those allow for our guidelines, allow to increase salaries, it just does not seem to me it's a time to be increasing executive compensation in any case. Well, again, while we are not increasing and telling all of the other employees campus-wide that they will not be receiving increases because of budget cuts.
Thank you. Would any trustee like to, I'm sorry. Oh, trustee Lopez, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be clear. I don't think there's been a decision about no raises for employees. I think it's all part of the collective bargaining process. I think the conversation has been that, given the budget situation, we're going to have to make some tough choices. But we are in conversations, in collective bargaining conversations with all of our employee, or I believe, certainly conversations with all of our unions, especially, we have salary reopeners. So there's no decision being made. It's a negotiated issue.
That's an excellent point. And if I might add, in light of the kind of foundation you just laid, one of the things that's a requirement on the part of ourselves as fiduciaries is to also consider the executive salaries of presidents and officials within the chancellor's office. I know the history of discussions in this area, and it's been contentious at times. But I would encourage the members of this board as fiduciaries. One, we got the chancellor we desired. And she's taken us places. Yesterday was one of the most uplifting days I've had on this board during the five-year period I've been on the board. And I receive the sentiment the lieutenant governor has conveyed. I believe, Mr. Vice Chancellor, that this salary is consistent with our policies, is it not?
It is.
Okay. I suspect, and chancellor, I'd like just for you to say a word about this because this is something that even in hard times, we have to talk about.
You know, during hard times, we've already agreed, I am appointing, assembling a group, a work group, to actually look at our compensation policy, not only for presidents and executives, but for faculty and staff as well. And we're doing that because we are really looking judiciously at what is happening across our state with this budget. And so we're going to be looking at this for all employees, regardless of where they sit in the CSU.
And Lieutenant Governor, I see your hand up again.
Yes, all right. It was my understanding that it was tied to the budget. So if that has not been decided, then I would simply encourage the trustees to use the same kinds of principles for increases of salaries for employees across the system as we do for executive compensation.
Thank you for that input. Does any trustee wish to further comment on this? If not, may I please have a roll call?
Trustee Adamson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramblah?
Yes.
Trustee Braar?
Yes.
Chair Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Pahardo?
Yes.
Trustee Firstenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Chancellor Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gilarducci?
Yes.
Trustee Gilbert Lory?
Yes.
Trustee Wahado?
No.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis?
No.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee McGory?
Yes.
Trustee Steinhouser?
Yes.
Trustee Yu Malakar?
Yes.
The vote is 14-2. The motion passes.
Thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, I know you hate to hear this, but this concludes the business of the September 2025 meeting of the Board of Trustees. I want to again express my gratitude to my board colleagues for your hard work and dedication over the past four days. I'm still working on that, you all. The board will continue, will reconvene for the next Board of Trustees meeting on November 17, 18, and 19 of this year. Know that this meeting will go up in order of due course 10 days in advance of the meeting. Thank you, and we are adjourned.
Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college. Establishing the CSU is a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college. Establishing the CSU is a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023-24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU thanks our generous donors and congratulates the awardees. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The California State University is the nation's largest and most diverse four-year public university system. Over 460,000 students attend one of our nearly two dozen universities. About one-third of our undergrad- About one-third of our undergraduates are the first in their family to attend college, establishing the CSU as a pathway to student success. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU offers a quality education at a great value. Almost two-thirds of our graduating undergrads in 2023, 24 finished with no student debt. Many students received grants and scholarships. One of the university's most celebrated scholarships is the CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Every year, one student from each CSU is awarded the system's highest recognition of achievement for superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, and community service. The honorees also have demonstrated financial need and have overcome challenges and hardships. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Established in 1984 by the William Randolph Hearst Foundation and with additional funding from trustee emeritus Ali C. Rozi, the trustees' awards have given scholarships to more than 500 students. This year's scholarships range from $7,000 to $18,000 for a total of $216,000. The CSU-